Okay, I would entertain the motion to allow Bernal to participate via phone.
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote his aye. Public comment? Okay, I think a lot of us went down to Accolade. There was public comment last week about putting in streetlights, and I just wanted to respond to that. I think what needs to be done is for the owner of Accolade to put in parking lot lights and side of the building lights. They have no lights on the property whatsoever, so I think that's the first step.
There is, there is one, I think maybe two on the side of that building that I've never ever seen on.
Seen on, right.
Yeah.
Front porch light actually was not even on.
Yeah, so I don't know if she's had the side lights looked at. I know she mentioned the lights out of the parking lot, which I have seen people trying to work on. The ones on the side of the building, as long as I've lived there, I've never seen this one.
Do we feel a need for a response to her since she had come before us?
Is there a zoning ordinance about how much light?
Yeah, a residential district, the light really shouldn't flood onto another property. I believe there is a foot king measurement at the property line. So if there were to be lights installed, it would need to have some kind of shielding to direct that light down onto property and not flooding onto the residential property.
But in conjunction with that, isn't there a zoning ordinance that a business must have lights for their employees?
Right, yeah, that's that balance that you need to make sure that you have sufficient lighting for the employees to keep them busy but not flooding onto.
I would remind her of that.
Maybe I'll send a response to her, reference the people.
Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes from last month.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 14th, 2023.
Motion?
Say.
Motion and a second discussion, corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My vote is aye. Corrections report? entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the August 2023 treasuries report.
Pending audit.
Pending audit.
So.
Motion and a second, any questions?
I had emailed Andy, Andrew, some couple of questions, which I appreciated him getting back to me about it. There was one thing in there about fuel for charged to Rose Fire.
Right, that was charged to fire service, and again, that relates to that generator. So we pulled that back, that's maintenance and everything that relates to that generator's responsibility. Or sort of that got in that account.
Very good, thank you.
Do you want me to go down through your questions?
That's up to you.
But.
Something anybody else, you answered my questions. It's up to you.
I have no problem taking it, it's up to the council.
You've answered all my questions, I don't think anything else.
You answered all mine, it could be you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My vote is aye. I guess we still didn't have a sign.
We have that finalized and we should have that finished up for next month. Again, it's just trying to make sure that we can get everything aligned to what the residents, or not the residents, but the business owners have requested be altered in that zoning ordinance. It's taking what we have proposed and working with what Solicitor General said proposed and meshing those two, and we're having a little bit of difficulty making sure we're covering all those aspects that the business owners have requested.
Break the first time. Stormwater channel on North Constitution, I guess we were.
We do not have any update as far as the permitting with DEP and Army Corps of Engineers, but we did provide letters after council's direction from last month to the property owners indicating the responsibilities of both property owners for the pipe that discharges water from Constitution Avenue, but noted that the borough would still be responsible to clean up and reestablish the swale at the daylight of the pipe.
And do they know that we're going to need permission from the actual property owners as per the deed before we can do the work?
Down at the end of the pipe, yeah, that will require a temporary construction reserve.
Fire tax distribution?
Did you receive anything back from them?
No.
Fire tax distribution and settlement?
Do you have any?
Me or you?
Basically, Mayor had requested that council be provided just copies of the fire tax distribution from 2022, showing how we derive the number from basically what is brought in off of the fire tax billage compared to the expenses that are deducted from that billage, which ultimately ends up being a distribution of the fire company. So there were obviously a couple of big changes in '22, which I think is why we kind of sparked this discussion, one of which was getting back to the revised audit in '21 in which there were additional members placed on that workers' comp policy for the fire company as it really relates to EMS. So that's why there's that big difference on the first two lines. The second difference really relates to fuel costs and the installation of the fuel software, where we're able to track down the gallons and the type of vehicle and the department that's utilizing the fuel. So that's a clear record of what fuel is being utilized by the fire and the EMS. So that increased their cost because of this proper allocation. On the back of the first page, it does break down the two differences in how those costs are derived from the ambulance side to the fireside. And that was something that Rose Fire Company had asked to see, that they did not see in the past, so that they could properly transfer funds among the two entities.
Kim, you were going to put together some information about, like for instance, it'd be nice to know how our contribution to Rose Fire compares with others' municipalities.
Well, mostly ambulance. I know they get quite a bit of contribution from Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury Township, Cudores. I can't find your copy, my copy of what you just went over. Yeah, I don't. I guess my concern is that.
Why don't you share a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I've seen this.
Okay. There seems to be some discrepancy in the last three years. We've gone from giving them $70,000 down to $27,000. That is not going to sustain the fire department. $27,000 doesn't even pay utilities. And that's, in addition to that, is EMS, which we, I think, donate very little, especially compared to other municipalities. We give like $200?
Where they were getting $10,000 for training.
Okay, that was just the one they paid EMS for that, and we gave them that. We're going to have a major problem with EMS. Their budget right now is around $440,000 a year. They're taking in about $90,000 more than that, but that in no way is going to pay for a needed new ambulance. One of the ambulances has to be put on a new chassis. That is not going to be cheap. So they're kind of, next year, they're going to be in the hole, probably $250,000. They need a lot of equipment. I have a list of equipment that they requested for next year that they can't find the money to pay for. And it's all EMS equipment. Some of it is training, and I think, have they, do they get back to you on what they used the $10,000 for in training?
Only if they would provide a financial statement at the end of the year.
And they're supposed to?
Yes.
So that usually, we usually get that April, May. But I really think we need to consider and make sure that the other municipalities are paying their due diligence when it comes to us covering. Shrewsbury Township has nothing, they don't have a fire department, they don't have EMS.
Well, can we, I think what we should probably do is this. I mean, we know we're going to have in the next week, week and a half, we're going to have the EMS meeting with DCED and at Shrewsbury Township. So why don't we get through that and then form a little bit of an ad hoc committee to figure out what we need to do. Let's figure out what the goals are coming out of the DCED.
And that is strictly EMS. And then there's a separate one for fire.
Right, but this one we just got back was for EMS only.
Yeah, that's, we're going to have to do something there to help support them. I think most people in the community, and I know there are other organizations that donate to the fire company, and they think when they're giving this $10,000 to the fire company, part of it goes to EMS. It doesn't, even though they don't have separate EIN numbers, which they're thinking about doing. That money isn't split.
Can we put something in the newsletter to kind of explain that? Because it's a long time ago, I thought the same thing. They're in the same building, they're in the same group.
About, yeah, about two years ago, because you told me that. I write two checks now.
Yeah, I think it's probably, I don't think it's anybody's fault, but I just.
Oh, no, it's nobody's fault. Everybody just thinks it's Rose Fire and it's EMS and fire.
Well, it is actually Rose Fire and EMS. You can assume.
They have seen website.
Absolutely. You know, now when it comes to, you know, their membership and volunteer donations, that's different. They send an EMS out and they send a fire out. We did have a discussion on what might happen if we put in a EMS tax, and their concern is, well, people might say, well, if I'm paying the tax, why should I make a donation and join? Well, there's other opportunities besides just wanting to pay to support. You know, they're still getting a discount on their rate if the ambulance has to pick them up, takes them to the hospital, and their insurance doesn't cover the whole thing. You know, they've had to lower that. It used to be 75%, then it was, went down to 50%. This year it's 30%.
So why don't we?
If we delete that, I don't want anybody to know that. Just think it's.
Well, you get the tapes.
Yeah, but I really want us to consider when we're doing the budget this year.
Absolutely, and we're, you know, we're heading into budget, and I think it'll be good that we're getting the DCED study information before the next budget meeting. So I think we can discuss all this once we.
Fine, I just want everybody to be aware.
We can report on the DCED study meeting too at the next meeting.
And again, like I said, the last two years have been in the $70,000 range that we've given to, out of the fire tax. And this year, we're down to 27. I mean, and we're sure that's right.
Yeah, yeah, this is right, but just to keep in mind that that $18,000 of that was from the previous year that was revised. So it doesn't get you quite, obviously, to 70,000, but it makes up a little bit of the difference.
All right, very good, thank you. And I'll keep you informed that I have another meeting Thursday night. The fire company will discuss.
The ambulance doesn't get any of the fire tax. Why is the ambulance fuel taken out from the fire department for this fire tax?
That's a good question. Well, they do get, can you say that again?
Well, I guess this $27,000 that Rose is going to get is from the fire tax. All of that stays with Rose, right? They're not going to share that with the ambulance, is that correct?
No, they do not.
Then why is the ambulance fuel taken out of this if this money for the fire tax is solely for the fire department?
I guess the short answer is, just as we mentioned, there's still.
They're still enjoying one eye EIN.
Yeah, there's no other, I think that is just a throwback to the fact that it's always Rose Fire EMS, and that's how we treated it. And now I think they do need to establish a separate EIN if they're going to be separate. One is actually, obviously, one has paid employees and the other one is not. So it's actually probably to their benefit to establish.
Do you think that there could be a cooperation between municipalities to pay the fuel usage? I mean, you can't break it down, okay, one's down the street and the other one's to your hospital, the same chest.
The percentage that their municipality uses, we know we have 15%. So whatever the fuel was for that year, it would be 15%, right?
If you were establishing.
Yeah, if they would do that. I think they think that their contribution, which they do make, to Rose Fire and separately to EMS, I think they feel that that covers all of that in addition to the workers' comp, which we get back from them. Now, when we get a check for workers' comp, well, that goes back to the borough because we already paid it ahead of time.
Right, it shows as income at the top of that. It's actually the third page of the package. You see that the fire tax was actually one of four, and then there was about $12,000 received for workers' comp.
Your software splits out the fuel costs for fire and EMS, right?
Yeah, and that's, again, if you, the back of the first page at the top, there's a small chart. And again, this is what Rose Fire Company asked for this year that they would not provide in the past, to break out specific costs that relate to the fireside and the ambulance side. So we took the workers' comp, separated it by the two divisions, the revised audit, all related to the ambulance side, and then we broke out the fuel as well. They were going to, in turn, use this to have the ambulance side reimburse the fireside for part of those expenses. So that kind of goes with your question. They're going to end up getting that money back anyway.
But I should probably inquire Thursday as to whether fire is reimbursing?
That's up, that was, that's up to them.
Not that 88, I was thinking majority of that was the fire, but $55,000 of that was ambulance?
Yes.
They're paid.
I have a, there's a several questions.
It just seems like it just pops back.
Why is the fuel for ambulance $21,000 and fires only eight?
They run that, there's rigs all the time.
Up and down New York?
Yeah, they're constantly fueled.
The fires are, the rigs are so much larger. I would think that your differences like between 12 miles a gallon and five miles a gallon or something.
They had an accident today, I think it was today, out on Steltz Road, Steltz and Warwick. And I know everybody and their brother responded, you know, fire and ambulance. But yeah, I can see where you're saying. They're not making.
I don't know the actual division, but for every one fire call, ambulance probably goes out five times.
Yeah. I can give you those figures, I didn't bring them along, but I know there are, we have our year to date.
Do they track mileage annually across all vehicles, you know, fire and?
Do we?
No, not us, do they?
No.
Probably get that.
Well, you know, you're not thinking about that when you've got a house on fire.
No, I don't mean by call, I mean annually. Yeah, I don't expect anybody to write mileage down daily or anything like that. I'm just, just curious.
That has to be tracked for tax purposes.
Yeah, like either that or insurance.
Yeah.
Well, there is no, there is no charge. Here's something. Kristen Phillips Hill, I believe, and Kate Clunk have proposed that there is the ability to charge insurance companies or a patient for mileage. And I think they're looking at $2 a mile. Do you remember seeing that anywhere?
Yeah, they were talking about, I don't know if it's actually.
Well, they're looking to do that, which would help, but yeah, ambulance, you know, they run up to the, but you never know. They're back in service once they leave the hospital, then they go to another call. You know, I've seen them, you know, 8 o'clock in the morning, the next one's 8:45, the next one's 9 o'clock, it's real.
It adds up quick.
Yeah, it does, it does, but it's the time taken.
This looks like they played a drinking game and figured all this out. I mean, it's just interesting. Like, I mean, it just makes no sense that it's called a fire tax, but the ambulance uses so much of this and just a pittance is going to the actual fire.
Yeah, no, I agree with you 100%, but again, it was always the same EIN, so yeah.
Is that by law?
I'm sorry?
By law, because it's the same EIN?
No, that was their choice.
It's just, yeah, they decided not to split it out. So they have just the one EIN. They were, they were pretty much all volunteer.
Two, three years ago.
A couple of years ago, so it went completely. Yeah, kind of went by the wayside whenever they became all paid EMTs and paramedics.
And under the previous president of the fire company, they were going to get, do separate EINs for EMS and fire. And when the new president came in, it kind of went by the wayside, and I think that's something that tends to be.
But to your point, this needs fixed. I mean, it's not, it's not something that should stand, it needs fixed. But I'm not even sure we had the software in place to track it until recently.
Why was it called a fire tax in the beginning? The ambulance is getting 75% of this.
Well, it's kind of like, well, by law.
I don't think that we, as a borough, tracked who was getting what. We did not have anything on the fuel pumps to track who was actually using the fuel. And it was, again, Rose Fire and EMS. So we just, you know, we gave them the fire tax. We, you know, whether, what they did with it after that, we had an accounting, we got their financial audits at the end of the year, but we didn't track to see who was using, who was actually using the fuel.
How long has it been tracked now?
Sorry?
How long has it been tracked since?
It's a year.
The fuel has been, 2022 was a full year. So '21 was.
It's all computerized, isn't it?
'21 was about six months of the year. So maybe not.
Two years.
So.
Not without. Every person and every piece of equipment has its separate, what, pin? So we know who used what and how many gallons.
Vehicles that they have the permission to use.
So now that we know, we can fix it.
Question, so. I forget, are the ambulatory EMS services billed to who uses them? Like, do we pay for that if I need the ambulance to?
Now, your insurance company or you has to pay for your, the charges.
I was wondering if there is a element of people who still owe that haven't paid, like how much?
Oh, yeah, to the $200,000.
Right, so, I mean, that's obviously.
That's why, just to give you a little bit of background information, this came up about a year and a half, two years ago, and we asked DCED to sponsor a study. And we didn't know it was going to take this long, but it's government, so it took that long. And we got back now the results of the DCED study, which will be presented to us this week or next week. So that's how we approached it. But yes, this is an ongoing problem. I know myself and Kim have both had meetings with Kristen Phillips Hill, Katie Clunk. We've tried to figure out, I mean, to give you an idea, here's a silly, one silly thing. If you go to the hospital and you use the ambulance, the check for you going to the ambulance goes to you by law, by Pennsylvania state law. So you can cash that and go to the casino, and Rose, Aunt Rose Ambulance is trying to get the money from you, but you've already spent it because you didn't win.
So, I mean, that's already, that's two ambulances for us waiting.
The stuff that they do is just outrageous. So that's what we're trying to work on to get things like that fixed.
The second thing, as far as grants go, are we tapped out on grants? Or because of all the COVID stuff, have we reviewed the grants for eligible for? And perhaps there's some money of low hanging fruit there we can pick off that we're not aware of?
They do that, they've gotten several grants in the past couple of years, and they stay on top of those grants and apply for them. Both sides, EMS and, matter of fact, I think they got a $50,000 grant.
And I know Andrew's been working with them. If he sees a grant, he forwards it to them, so they realize, yeah. But yeah, we're working all that.
Yeah, and I do the same thing. I'll give it to them at the meeting or even email it to the treasurer.
So, I mean, so this will be discussed in the coming month or two for budget cycle. Kim has some passionate feelings about the EMS tax, and so we'll be talking about what we need to do.
I think the last time we looked at the EMS tax, it was like $7 a person. That's a couple of, you know, Starbucks.
That's a beer.
Yeah, anymore to sell. I don't know that people object. But that's something we'll discuss, I guess, with the budget. I will say, Andy and I have talked to Kristen Phillips Hill and Kate Clunk, and they are in favor of making some changes. The problem is, a lot of those changes have to be made on the federal level. Medicaid patients, we really had it when Spirit Trust had other care facility open. A lot of those people are on Medicaid. I think all we can bill is $86. You can't take three people, pay their salary, up the road, back down an hour for 86 bucks. Medicare was paying 136?
I think it's a little more than that.
Maybe 186.
Not anywhere where it costs them.
Their charge, basically, to go to your hospital, pick up a patient, do assessments, is. is around fifteen hundred dollars. Okay, and that gives them a little bit of profit, very seldom do they get that, and like Andy said, that we, we have put some legislation in place. There's really only one or two insurance companies that insist that they're gonna send the check to the person instead of the ambulance company.
Yeah, that, that seems.
So, we're working on it, but we all know, you know, to get something through the House and the Senate, it's not easy.
The only problem with the If you levy a tax, two percent tax, seven bucks or something, you know, we've had some tax increases in the borough, right, in the last few years, so there's another one, and then there's the adversity of the six hundred thousand owed to us, so the taxpayer would come back and say, well, what have you done to get that six hundred thousand, instead of taking another?
It's not owed to us, it's owed, owed to EMS.
And I will tell you, they have changed companies. Through Glen Rock, is it Commonwealth? They are no longer with, with the billing company they were with before, they are no longer with the company that took care of account, their accounts receivable. I've asked for a report, um, they just started that in May or June, so it's been a little soon to get a report, they generally come out quarterly, but I've asked if I'd be one of the first ones to be able to, to take a look at that and see how that's doing compared to the old company. Glen Rock, I know, was using this company and they were pretty satisfied with it, but we're gonna change the way they show the accounts receivable. I have suggested that they have somebody, when they're not busy, we've got an EMS supervisor, make some calls, wanted to remind you that you have a bill due here, oh, we do, you know, yeah, you, you still owe us three hundred and forty-two dollars, oh, I'll bring up a check, you know, that's what they have to do. Because as soon as you, you get the account, or the, what do they call it? Well, it's, cut the big accounts receivable.
Add that.
Yeah, they, they take forty, fifty percent of what they collect, the collection agency. So, we're, we're still not really making out there either, so.
News half of what you were trying to get.
Yeah.
But yeah, this will be discussed, like I said, we're, we'll get through the DCED first.
Thanks for taking the time to boil over that, because like you said, that's close to my heart.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, yeah, well, it's gonna be close to all of our hearts then, um, as our hearts get weak.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, are there any other questions on the fire tax? Want to thank Mayor Butcher for his service on Southern Regional Police Commission, he has resigned for personal reasons, and I'd like to consider ratifying the appointment of Dave Restor to the Southern Regional Police Commission to take his place.
You need a motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass? Pass?
I'm abstaining.
Perfect.
Does he need, does he need to make sure he has his financial?
Well, you think he has it then for the boroughs, I think, I guess you do need a separate one, though.
Yeah.
I think they gave that to you, I think, at the last police commission, right? They gave you the paperwork?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because they'll have to swear in and.
They did, yeah.
Okay.
I, it's just, this is just ratifying, I'd already appointed him. Consider approval of revised agreement with Glen Rock for police coverage with Sturgis Southern Regional Police Department. Just a couple of quick notes, um, that we can discuss, but I want to point out that this is not approving an hourly rate, that's being done by SRPD, and they're coming up with a, a formula for calculating the hourly rate. We are approving, however, a hundred percent above the member rate, so, or a hundred and ten percent above the member rate, so they'll be paying ten percent more than members. And I also want to point out that as costs increase, then the hours decrease, so if Glen Rock does not participate with additional funding, their hours that they would be buying would go down as the cost per hour goes up. This document also refers to an IGA, which is in the process of being revised. That said, I'll open it up for questions. Actually, I need a motion probably to approve this before we continue.
I'll make that motion. With the, with the, we approved the modified.
Police services agreement. Second?
Second.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, discussion?
What happens if one of the municipalities doesn't agree with?
Uh, well, I'm pretty sure it has to be unanimous, but.
Well, that's what I thought.
One of the municipalities, what, what's happened here is that the, we're doing this in conjunction with Glen Rock reviewing it, because we're close to budget, the budget time, and we're trying to get it approved simultaneously, so what we're doing is, we're basically approving this, um, with the, with the condition that Glen Rock approves it, so.
In Stewartstown and?
Oh, yeah, Stewartstown, yes, and Shrewsbury Borough.
We're just the first one.
Sorry.
We're just the first one to have a chance at it.
Are we? Okay, I didn't know Shrewsbury. Yeah, we just got it, I just got it, yeah, it was reviewed and approved by the police commission, so the police commission has, has fully supported, supported this.
And nothing's changed with long-term obligations, they are done as of?
Right, long-term obligations, they are, they are done with, with any long-term obligations, however, as per our accounting in the finance committee, there are no long-term obligations, so they, it's a, it's a net zero, no matter what happens.
Eric looks like she's looking for something.
No, it was just, it talks about the default, between three years, three and six, they'll pay fifty percent of their annual rate. The default occurs in the seventh year of the initial term, or in the, of the successive terms, the amount of damages occurred and handled by the borough shall equal to around twenty-five percent of the borough's annual.
Okay.
Yeah, just for the record, Bruce Merrill, Andy, you mentioned that the hourly rate is still to be determined, of being looked at by, I assume, the department and the commission. Well, what are the hours that they're gonna get billed for, you know, several months back, I made a presentation where I talked about the actual service hours and administrative hours. Will this hourly rate apply to only service hours, is Glen Rock going to be taxed for service hours, or will they also get tagged for administrative hours as well?
No, they would basically be charged exactly the member rate plus ten percent, which would, our member rate includes administrative, gas, cars, training time, everything.
Okay, so the administrative rate is going, the rate they're gonna tax, like you're saying, will include administrative costs?
Correct.
Okay.
Personally, I would have liked to have seen a, an example, not an example, but what they figured is the, um, actual dollar rate per hour, or PPU, whichever they want to do, but it's.
Again, I point out that we're not really, that's not what this, the motion is to approve this, this, this document does not address the actual rate that they'll be paying, it only addresses the fact that it'll be ten percent higher than new treatment's rate.
Yeah? Are, are you saying that you haven't seen the analysis or don't know what they're basing the analysis on?
Some of us have an idea of what it will be because of being on the finance committee. I don't know if that's public or, do we need that executive section?
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna ask you to disclose it here in public, I, I just stayed up, be concerned if you're on the finance committee and this hasn't been disclosed to you.
Well, it has.
Oh, okay, alright.
Do we know what the financial impact for our borough is to cover the deficit that's being created?
Well, we know that last year Glen Rock was at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We know that they've locked in three hundred thousand dollars for this next year, so we know automatically that we're going to have to pay about a third of the sixty thousand dollar deficit, but that's not necessarily a bad thing, we also get those hours, so we will have additional police coverage, they'll be able to do additional community things, you know, that, that'll be in.
Is there a discussion if they exceed their hours of additional rate?
Specifically, paragraph eight discusses that if they, inability to render services, it says that, um, if the borough has exceeded its annual PP allocation for police protection, SRPD shall during such a period of time not be required to offer services to the borough. SRPD will, in any event, facilitate backup services to the borough to the extent that borough has such agreements with other communities or the Pennsylvania State Police. So if they run out of time, they have to default back to the Pennsylvania State Police, or an option would be that they would purchase additional time from SRPD.
Thank you.
Curious about our, our numbers, if there's any other insight that can be shared, especially having this received this today.
The annual increase in the rate will not exceed five percent a year, so it's not gonna stay at three hundred thousand. Initial contracts for seven years. They won't add any of the rebids, they won't have a seat on the commission. It's about default. Pretty much, it's stayed pretty much within what we had previously discussed in the last seven months.
I have another question.
Dave?
So if it doesn't exceed five percent, if it goes up ten percent next year, they're not really gonna be paying ten percent above member rate?
They're gonna, they will, they will be, what happens is, if, if, let's say, we go up ten percent, they're capped at five, that means that they're going to be paying less money, which means they get less hours.
Then once again, we still have to make up the difference of that.
That's a true statement.
Again, then in addition to making up the difference of, would you say three hundred thousand is what they're gonna pay?
They're gonna pay three hundred, right?
They're, they're starting, correct?
For twenty twenty-four.
So the three member municipalities have to make up that difference in the first year of this agreement, they then have to make up, they have to potentially make up any difference in future years if it goes over five percent. Is that correct?
Yes. Speaking strictly, go ahead.
So I understand that obviously we want to keep them with the three hundred thousand, or else we have to make up all that, but this really sounds like the sweetheart deal for Glen Rock.
It is in, in some, I was just about to say, you know, speaking as a poker player, I, you know, they basically have us over barrel right now, I mean, we, we, our two choices are, we either move forward and save three hundred thousand, or we pay twenty thousand plus additional taxes, I guess you would call it, if, if our number of hours go down.
As I said, sweetheart deal for Glen Rock.
It is.
Well, the, the third option is, of course, to hold them to the terms of the agreement. I mean, we are having to sort of, sort of blind eye to the ICA that exists in terms of letters and everything else that they would require to submit, that they haven't done yet, so there are actually three options on the table.
Well, the, the third option though, and, and yeah, I'll turn off my microphone and pretend the camera's not there, but basically, they've, they've told us, go ahead, we've got a lawyer, and the lawyer said, we're gonna go forward with that, so you, you, those are our choices, we basically don't, we don't have a third choice, or the third choice would at most be, uh, well, Walt here would make a lot of money because we would be paying lawyers.
My marketing department would like that, you folks wouldn't.
But just to clarify, the base, I assume that the monies that will have to be made up by the, you know, the, the cap on Glen Rock will be made up by the other three member communities based on their PPU's allocations.
That's correct.
And so if you look at the PPU allocations, New Freedom will suck up about forty percent of whatever it is that, of that, that has to be made up.
Thirty-three point seven, yeah.
But we will also receive the additional coverage.
No, I, I, well, and I hope we do good stuff with that coverage. But just to remind you, you know, what the analysis showed, that I presented about several months ago, that if they had calculated the true hourly rates and put everybody on an hourly rate, Glen Rock would not be asking for any relief right now, they would be below three hundred thousand dollars and get the same service that they've got, based on, on the numbers that the police department provided in terms of the service hours in twenty twenty-two, and on the cost provided by your bookkeeper in twenty twenty-two. So, you know, you know where the rest of the money is, is going to subsidize, going to subsidize two school districts that have a budget of sixty million dollars roughly, and it wouldn't take much for them to pony up what is required, but they don't, and nobody asks them to, so it gets passed back to the residents of the member communities, it's too bad.
But it's better than having to pass three hundred thousand dollars back to the members of the community.
Well, I mean, I mean, and this is what the police commission could take upon themselves to do, I mean, the studies were done seven years ago that showed what equitable hourly rates were, and for whatever reasons, they have chosen not to implement it, and if they were all put on an hourly rate, you saw what the hourly hours were, you know what school budgets are, roughly sixty million dollars in each one of these school budgets, they could put three officers on duty there and probably wouldn't affect their budget by less than one percent. One percent to provide three officers in school in today's environment, hell, you ought to take that in a heartbeat, but nobody proposes it, nobody does it, and nobody asks them to pay, and so a lot of that money that isn't being done is getting passed back into the communities, which is why Glen Rock is saying they can't afford it, and it's, it's just that simple, it's simple math, it's not hard. I, at least I'm glad to hear that they're working on the hourly rate, you gotta do it with administrative hours.
Again, I, I don't disagree that as a police commission, it probably should be discussed what the school districts pay, I'm sure the school districts right now are under contract for some length of time, but that doesn't really influence our decision tonight, where we're approving or not the Glen Rock Police Services Agreement. I agree, it may not be equitable across all municipalities or non-member municipalities, but I think what we need to figure out is, is ten percent above what we're paying equitable for Glen Rock. But I think what we need to figure out is 10% above what we're paying equitable for Glen Rock.
I'll call the question. I will call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor of approving the Glen Rock Police Services Agreement? Please say aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
Aye.
My vote is aye. Motion's carried. I would also, at this time, like to make a motion that we send a cover letter back to Glen Rock with the approval, asking to be able to approve the rate given to Glen Rock.
One second.
Discussion?
Does this go back to Glen Rock or does it go?
Oh, it goes back to the police commission.
Okay.
The cover, I'm sorry, did I say Glen Rock?
Yeah.
Cover letter back to the police commission requesting that we also approve the rate that's going to be given to Glen Rock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Can you grab something?
Along those lines, do we have an update on the revised interregional agreement since it's?
Well, I actually have that as a note. The IGA is actually referenced in this document. And I think Mike's intent is to start having IGA meetings again. But obviously, some IGA has to come back to this borough for approval before January 1st, right?
Right.
So, and it has to be approved and in place so that what's referenced is in here. So, I think that's what's his intent, the urgency to approve this so that it was approved simultaneously so that Glen Rock could be written out of the IGA. So, I think that was the intent.
Wasn't there some discussion, Erica, you'll remember, wasn't there some discussion that instead of completely rewriting an IGA, the old one is amended to incorporate?
Yeah, the one that was worked on is like, I would say 80, 90% done already. So, I don't see a huge hurdle.
Yeah, but even if we would just have to amend the current one so that we could do it by January, right? Would you think we could amend it?
Probably could.
Do you think we could amend it?
Well, you always can amend, but the amendment would have to be approved. And I would hate to see us kick the can down the road again. I mean, it's been four years. I like, I like Erica's idea of seeing it 100% done, like it's finished.
But it possibly be done by the end of the year.
It does. I agree with you 100%. It's referenced in the document.
I'm talking about doing this parallel, so I'm sure we'll be coming back next month.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Last month, there was discussion about not signing something because you didn't have all the information for the grant. But now, you're going to agree something when you don't have all the information?
What information don't we have?
The IGA.
Well, the IGA is, the reason it hasn't been finished is because it includes Glen Rock as a, as a member municipality.
It's been four years it's not finished. And now, you're approving something that incorporates an IGA that you don't have in front of them.
It was finished and given to the boroughs.
So, you all do have it.
I think we had a draft. I don't think we have anything that you would consider a finished document.
So, again, you're approving this based on something you don't have.
In essence, yeah.
Well, aren't we doing this in parallel? I thought that's what the point was. And I don't see an issue with that at all.
Yeah, it's being done in parallel. I mean, it would have been nice if we could have had everything done and had six months before budget cycle. But here we are, you know, heading into budget cycle with, you know, a hole in the budget of, we don't know what because Glen Rock has approved the agreement as of yet. So, yes, you're right. We should have it. It would be nice if we had, in a perfect world, we would have everything we needed and do it all in one fell swoop, but.
How often is that committee meeting currently? Because I know Mike canceled meetings for like six months.
They didn't because until this got figured out, that wasn't going to be picked back up.
So, now we'll, you'll start having IGA meetings again. We're in next month, October, November, like you said, December. And like Andrew said, this has got to be done by the December meeting.
There's, there's no, I mean, again, this is really kind of none of my business, but IGA meetings have been an hour. If you have to lock yourself in a room over the weekend.
You betcha.
You lock yourself in a room and finish it. You know, I mean, it can be done. And as you said, it's 80, 90% done. Finish it.
So, will you send some stipulation saying that you're approving this condition or having the completed IGA?
I like that. I will modify my motion. I will modify.
It's not done anyway. It doesn't matter.
Why doesn't it? It references it.
It references it, but it's not going to go forward if that doesn't come along with it anyway. So, I don't understand.
I see what you're saying, that we have to have.
It happens, it has to happen, so it doesn't make sense.
I probably put a line in there and saying that we realize that the IGA has to come before January 1st. Just go ahead and put the line in. I mean, it's obvious that, you know, contractually, the IGA, just as you said, contractually, the IGA has to be completed before January 1st. Make a note of that when you send that, draft that to the committee committee.
And for my working on it, you're working on it. It's not going to take a whole lot to make some adaptation.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was a couple of years ago and then they stopped having meetings.
Glen Rock was locked into it. Now, they're not locked into it. That was what the holdup was.
But aren't they still locked into it? They just don't think they are?
They're not going to be that with this whole thing.
We just approved something saying they're not locked into it. They're getting out January 1st. They're not, no longer a member community, so. Go ahead.
To the point of not knowing, though, we don't know what the proposed budget is for 24 yet.
That is a true statement.
Yeah.
We don't even know if we're facing 360,000 or 60,000. So, we don't even know what the actual budget is.
And the IGA, doesn't it say that their budget has to be complete by September 1st?
I believe it is September 1st.
So, hopefully, they'll have a budget by September 1st. Are they meeting?
It says September.
11th. That was ten days.
Yeah, so.
11th, September 11th.
They're always late because of something.
We do that every year.
Yeah. So, somebody's got to push for that to get.
Okay. So, Andy's putting it in the, in the letter of approval that, the two caveats, basically, that we realize that the IGA has to be completed by January 1st and that New Freedom Borough wants approval of the rate that is going to be finally given to Glen Rock. That may not be until January 1st, depending on how long it takes us to get a budget from the police department.
So, is there discussion if Glen Rock takes the 360 out completely, what's going to be done? Like, what's the fallback for that?
Well, it's a good question if we wouldn't sign this.
Because it should be at least entertained at this point because the, I don't want to call them rogue, but the way that they're being, you have to present all options at the table ahead of time and have a plan to carry it forward so that you don't get smacked.
Wouldn't we have to adhere to the current IGA if they back out? All right.
Glen Rock has said they're all but signed yet, so, you know.
Well, that's good information.
And we're at a disadvantage if our meeting's before their meeting. Had their meeting already occurred, we wouldn't have this discussion right now. They'd either be in or they'd be out.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, under normal circumstances, they would approve it before we would approve it.
Right.
Although, yeah, you can argue that either way too, right? I mean, we're, we're sending them a contract, so, I mean, it wouldn't be unusual if we're the landlord and they're the letsee that we would be filling out the lease and sending it to them. So, I think either way works in this situation.
So, these members all may be running, including the police commission, continuation meetings? I mean, you're getting down to the wire. Shouldn't we be working every two weeks and having the meetings as opposed to waiting on these cycles for who's meeting and who's not?
Well, I would hope that they would call a, an IGA meeting in this case, yes. Any questions?
The contract's good for what, seven years?
Seven years, yeah.
Just my opinion, in seven years, now Glen Rock's going to want another 40 million off or something, 40,000.
They're not going to have any choice because they're not a member.
Well, I mean, at that time, we would, they could actually, it has to be in year five. Before the end of year five, they have to either renew at whatever the police commission would come up with at that time or they would have to say, we're not going to renew. We're going to be done after two years.
Yeah, it requires two years' notice.
So.
Hey, Andy?
Sir?
If they back out, do we, what, what, what could that actually really do to us if they back out or sign up?
Well, that's kind of what Mike was asking. He was asking what happens if they decide they don't want to sign up. So, I think we'll know that in two weeks. But at that point, we would, we would have to make some hard decisions.
Yeah, because that, that could put us back into position of paying a lot extra.
Right, obviously. 30, 34% of 360,000.
That'd be a lot.
Yes. I have my calculator, but a lot is a bit of a... All right. Consider approval of the land development plan for Mason Dixon Baptist Church and waivers.
This is reapproval.
Reapproval, yes, I'm sorry.
So, do they have, excuse me, do they have these waivers approved before or were they part of the plan? They had these waivers approved before. However, when they went to record the plan at the courthouse, the waivers were not listed individually on the cover sheet. Therefore, it requires council to reapprove. Council already approved the land development plan and each individual waiver. But in order to update that and make that eligible for recording at the courthouse, you need to reapprove each, there's actually four items there. So, you're going to approve the land development plan and then each waiver additionally, so.
Do we do it all in one motion?
No.
No. Okay. I would consider a motion for reapproval of the land development plan for Mason Dixon Baptist Church.
We're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Approval for installation of concrete sidewalk.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Installation of concrete curbing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Payment of recreational fee.
Overruled. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of the 2024 municipal obligation to pension plan. We retain a motion? Just the total. The total obligation is $81,139.
I move we approve that.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
My vote is aye.
Just for clarification, the majority of even the last four years, the state allocation has all but satisfied that minimum municipal obligation, sorry. So, just in '22, the MMO was 55,000. Our state allocation was 50,000, so the borough paid out 5,300. So, just one example that normally, based on that per unit allocation, we've been utilizing a well-managed fund and actually have a plan right now that's overfunded, which is why we take that discount on that calculation. So, it's proper management of the fund.
Question? Sorry, I'm talking too much, so this will be my last time. When, when we have things like installation of concrete sidewalk and the curb and so forth, is there a way in the agenda you could put the amount behind it so we actually see the money?
It doesn't matter. We're not paying for it. This is all being done by Mason Dixon Baptist Church. And this is really just a permit approval. It's giving them permission to do it. But we don't have to pay for it.
Nice question. Permission for ordering.
Well, you're actually waiving the requirement for concrete curbing.
Okay, and the sidewalk.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense in this happen.
Yeah, I was at the planning commission meeting and everything and he said, maybe at a later time.
Correct, yeah. There's a note on the plan that should the borough wish for that concrete curbing and sidewalk to be installed, they have to provide the church six months' notice of that requirement. So, yes, you're waiving that initial requirement, but it's still a note on the plan that we could require this in the future.
Okay. Draft rental housing and occupancy ordinance. I make a motion that we consider the draft rental housing and occupancy ordinance. Well, yeah, we, yeah, it's the first look at this, but. Second.
I'm just talking about, sure, I'll second.
Since I made the motion, I'm going to, I'm going to ask everybody a question, okay? I would like to see a show of hands of all of the people here, and I'll include council in this question, who would like to have an inspector come to their house to check to make sure they have fire extinguishers, firearms, and make sure their handrails are attached. Can I see a show of hands because we'll, we'll send one down here tomorrow? Anybody? Then, why, why do we think as a council that renters would really want to have anybody come and inspect their houses? I can understand the, if there is a problem with a house, if I'm a tenant and I'm having a problem with my house and I can't get my landlord to fix it, my handrail's falling off and I want my landlord to fix that, they should be able to call the borough and say, hey, I want an inspector to come. But I consider this, you may not, but we'll see. I consider this a gross infringement on my Fourth Amendment rights. I consider this you coming into my house without a search warrant to walk through and look and see what I got in my house. And that's, that's exactly what, what. And that's, that's exactly what, what these type things are. So, I can understand inspections when the apartment is vacated and there's nobody living there, like between tenants, or when it's requested by a tenant and the tenant is there. I don't understand why the lease has to be displayed prominently in the house, I don't hang my mortgage on the wall for my guests to come up and look at. Um, so, I think that's what I have to say about that. I, I don't, I don't think, uh, this is, this is something that should be in New Freedom Borough, and I could cite where a federal judge rules warrantless rental inspections are unconstitutional in Portsmouth City, Pottstown renters score a major win in challenge to unconstitutional rental inspections. Um, I can, I can also cite where people point out that administrative warrants are open-ended in scope and that nothing prevents the police from accompanying inspectors and that evidence of illegal activity in a rental property can be observed by an inspector and reported to the, to the attorney. Um, overall, the inspection program is a search and seizure nightmare, completely bypasses protections in the federal Fourth Amendment and in the state constitution.
Andrew, do we know, can we identify all the rental properties in New Freedom? We're gonna have to try to find out, it's probably circum the landlords that, that own those properties.
If, we have a general idea from working through the Knox Box registration, uh, but there are most, you know, there could still be some that slip through that wouldn't be identified until, you know, maybe a couple of years down the road that this was implemented. Sure. You, you have, basically, at that point, you're checking tax records compared to utility records, if there's a difference there, or if there's someone in that house that, uh, you know, the, the owner is actually letting there, but everything's still in the owner's name, that there could be, uh, different circumstances that could really recapitulate.
Well, the problem that we've had with the cockroaches and some of the other things, was, was something similar to this be appropriate? I mean, not to this extent, but something similar to this.
Well.
Could be as much power.
If you, if you walked into, um, let's say you walked into that house, um, and you saw that it was messy, that doesn't necessarily cause a citation. I mean, people are, some people are messy, you know? I mean, but how are you gonna determine, I mean, that's actually a really good example because there you have one rental unit, the other ones are under occupied, so you're not gonna get to inspect the others. How are you even gonna know where the cockroaches came from? As Judge Sweeney said, you'd have to paint, you know, a little fingernail polish on the cockroaches and try to track them down.
I, I personally think something needs to be done. I mean, we already have an ordinance that we really don't enforce that says anyone who has a rental property must register the, um, la Cie with the borough, and we, we've just kinda let it go. You know, we have thirty days to.
That's entirely different, letting somebody know that somebody's living somewhere as opposed to actually going and inspecting their home.
Well, I'm saying, um, what I'm saying is, we need, I think we need to take this one step further because what it's doing in my mind is it's protecting the renter from a slum landlord, that's why Glen Rock has a major rental ordinance, because are you gonna complain to the borough?
Yeah, and put on Saturday Citizen, put it in the borough newsletter, that if you're having a problem with your landlord and he's not taking care of your property, feel free to call the borough and we will go and inspect it.
And we all know that they're not ever gonna get another lease from that arson. They're gonna be out on the street looking for something else, especially if it's a month-to-month lease, they're gonna get ticked off and say, you're gonna report me? Goodbye, I'll see ya. I think it's to protect, protect the renter, not necessarily make it harder on the person that owns the property, but I think they have to have some.
Section one oh eight.
Some diligence.
Section one oh eight says that the owner has to be present for the inspection, but it doesn't say that.
Doesn't it say unless they're out of state or something?
Yeah, but it doesn't say that the, the homeowner or the, uh, the person who's making that place their home has to be present.
No, but we're making sure that that, that area is protected for the person that's living there and renting.
So when I, so when I'm renting a place and my fifteen-hundred-dollar allowance disappears off my chest of drawers, do I come back to the borough for re-admission?
Well, you're, I don't, that, I don't think it's either.
Yeah, it is, I mean, you're going into somebody's home uninvited.
But you're not gonna be by yourself, you're gonna be with the owner.
Okay.
Tim, have you met the owner of that property?
There are several, there are several properties.
No, but the one that we're all thinking of.
That I don't even wanna meet.
Because I'm pretty sure he will meet you at that door, but they don't.
I, I don't know which one you're talking about, but I know there are several that I've already gotten complaints, there's no egress to certain apartments, there's no, you know, heat that works in the wintertime, there's.
But those should be things to report.
Why are you gonna report it when they're gonna kick you out on the street and that's the only place you have to live, because.
How much is this gonna cost to, to, to put an inspection in place, 'cause that'll just get asked straight onto the, the renter?
That was something that I didn't see in there, maybe I just missed it.
Just say it's a council or set.
No, most, most of, most people that lease their property or rent it have to pay a, I think Glen Rock's twenty-five dollars a year, is it twenty-five or fifty? Do you remember, Erica? There, there is a payment, is that in ours?
Yeah, it's, it's in section one eighteen, that's an annual registration fee. That, it, it's not said in here, it would be.
That would be by resolution.
Yeah, yeah, so that's in here, um, and then that would include if you went with something like this, the every-two-year inspection licensing fee, but if there would be a need for additional inspections, uh, that would be set by council as well.
I, I talked to several people and they won't complain because they know that they'll be out on the street when they're looking.
So, so what happens if, let's say we were able to work the, the language out in the agreement, so our inspector goes out, looks at an apartment, everything's working great, heat's on in the wintertime next week, heat quits, and the landlord doesn't fix it, so then what? So, the, the, the tenant's gonna have to call, I mean, the, the inspector's not clairvoyant, he's not gonna know the heat's off or anything, somebody has to notify the borough so the borough can do what it needs to do. You know, the annual inspection, just to make sure, okay, starting, yeah, everything is kosher to start with, you know, heat, et cetera, you know, and then next week, next month, something happens, the tenant's gotta, somebody has to tell the, the borough, make a complaint to the borough, or, uh, the, the tenant has to, unfortunately, has to suck it up and what? Get a camping kit and cook on a, a one little Bunsen burger or something, that's ridiculous. But, you see what I'm saying? I mean, the annual inspection, even if we work out a way to get that accomplished, that's a snapshot look, right?
Is it every year or every two years?
This is written for every two years.
Every two years.
Doesn't matter.
I think that's what Glen Rock does.
The tenant still, somebody still has to call the borough and say, hey, I got a problem.
They're not gonna do it, I'm telling you, because they're gonna get kicked out the following month.
Well, you know, maybe the borough oughta do something if that's the case, if, if they take some kind of action like that, I don't know what it would be.
Well, I think that's what this is gonna do. This, this is gonna give our, give an inspector a chance to go in, so you got a fire extinguisher, you got this, 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 whatever the requirements are, I don't think it's all that involved to, as to what we're requiring, right?
But then, like he said, what happens one month after the inspection, the heat goes off, so for twenty-three months, they have no heat.
Well, then, then you're gonna have to depend on some, the renter or somebody, or sometimes a neighbor. This is where I get, I get some of my complaints for places like this from a neighbor that says, this poor guy's living up on the third floor and there's no, no egress, you know?
But you're saying that they won't call and complain, so if it's inspected and the very next month, the heat goes out, they're not gonna call and complain?
Well, it's not just heat, there are a lot of other things that are.
Whenever the reason is, it's not gonna be inspected for another twenty-three months, so it can be left undone for twenty-three more months.
We could change it to that once a year, you know, if that.
And how many rentals do we have in New Freedom and how much time is it gonna take?
I don't even know that we know how many that is we have, because.
What would that cost be?
I mean, I don't think we would include in this, I don't know how you could exclude it, um.
You can't.
Okay, you know where I'm, you know where I'm.
Always.
I, I think that you've got, you've got places that have management companies that do that for us.
But some management companies speak.
No, but some don't.
Some don't, right, but you can't pick and choose, you can't, you as mayor.
So basically, they think of Franklin Square, you know?
Yeah, I know you're, I knew you were thinking Franklin Square, and I, yeah, they're great, they're, they're gonna make sure everything's okay in their apartments, but you can't pick and choose which landlords you're gonna inspect.
Normally, the way that it's, it's handled, unless your name is on the deed, um, that's considered a rental space, if you're letting that in.
Maybe this isn't the, isn't the answer, but I think we need to have something in place, like I said, to protect those people that are.
Who's living on the third floor without egress? And how are you going to solve the egress problem? You're not gonna solve that.
You're gonna say you can't rent it.
Okay, then you're out on the street, you're just, as you were trying to keep them not on the street, now you just kicked out somebody 'cause they're living on the third floor, but.
I, I've seen, I've seen places and had to do it, they have to have steps outside.
They're not gonna do that, it costs a fortune.
I've, I've seen them do it.
They're not.
I have somebody tabled this, this is the first time it's come before council, I wanted to hear the discussion and didn't have time to do further investigation, um, on this, and I'd like to discuss this next month.
And maybe come, maybe come back with some different ideas, eliminate this, that.
May I say something?
I just think something needs to be.
Uh, I'll tell you, as it's written, I don't like the idea of some of those things because they do violate Fourth Amendment rights, and.
Well, apparently, they don't, or.
I think we should have a discussion and try to come up with something just a little different because I don't like the idea of somebody coming in, you know, like that. I just, I, I sort of violates the rights, you know what I mean?
I agree.
Why don't we table it, like Erica suggested, and we all come back next, next month with a, with our ideas, and we may have to ask our solicitor for a different look at this whole thing.
Davey, you wrote that up, right?
No, it's spring egress.
Yeah, I, I took.
Oh, it's spring egress.
I took existing one and reworded.
And I had sent you Glen Rocks, I believe, if you still have that, maybe what we can do is make, do some comparison.
I'm the solicitor for North York Borough and, and they have one. I think that theirs provides for inspection between tenants, um, if I recall correctly. Um, I don't know what other inspection requirements there are, there is a registration fee, an annual registration fee that they pay, uh, there's inspection between tenants and, um, that's the only inspection I recall, but there might be one based on a complaint or something, so, take a look at that.
And I, as I started off saying. I agree, I agree a hundred percent, between tenants, no problem, complaint, no problem. You know, if the tenant calls, it's one should come.
My suggestion for the council would be to, um, postpone further discussion until the next meeting and direct that your manager investigate other ordinances they've come up with and provide you with what they say about inspections, so that you could take a look at what language they've had, they could take a look at it and then you could decide, you know, cafeteria style, you know, I want this one and I want that one, you know, that type of thing, in terms of what, what the inspection requirement would be.
Are there a lot of changes, Andrew, between this and others that you have looked at, 'cause I noticed all Glen Rocks and.
Yeah, I mean, I've had experience with them. You know, most of them are going to utilize the International Property Maintenance Code as the basis for those rental inspections, it's how you craft the licensing and the inspection and the other requirements within that. So, you have that, that boilerplate of the International Property Maintenance Code, how you structure it outside of that is completely up to council's determination, but this is just a draft to start the conversation and to see which direction council wants to go, if, if any, so, don't, that's why there's draft.
Right.
Blaster it all over, don't, don't take it as written instead, take it as a starting point.
Let me ask, let me ask the solicitor, suppose, uh, some municipality has an ordinance like this, uh, you mentioned a couple municipalities, and suppose a, a property owner says, I'm not doing it, it's violation of constitutional rights, I might let the agent, so what are you gonna do about it?
They take away their, they take away, no, they take away their rental permit.
Yeah, what, what they would do would be, they would lose their right for, uh, the permit to, um, to lease the premises, if they leased in violation of that, then it would be enforced just as any other ordinance would be enforced.
Well, then I would say, I'll see you in court then, because you're, you're trying to impose a requirement, it's a violation of my rights, and you're holding that over my head to get my, my permit to rent it, and again, we're back to the same constitutional issue that, that started in the first place, so I, I don't know, I need to do that.
And your tenant still ends up on the street because then he has no place to live, 'cause he has no, there's no.
Well, we, we, we started this ourselves last year, we did the property maintenance agreement, so this is, this is a, this is something we expected, so I think we have to come up with some way of dealing with it.
And I don't see this as being a lot different than some of our other zoning walls, where if I do something to my house, your inspector comes in and takes a look at whether it's been done right, did I have a certified electrician do it, or is the building, you know, how they did it up to code? You know, I know when I added my.
Yeah, really, because this house is already built, there's already somebody living in it, and I think that that's probably.
I was living in my house when we had it on, and when the inspector came on, he was up in the bedroom, make sure that it was correctly, uh.
Well, sure, if you had on.
Or if you had to start a new electrical service.
Your Rolex watch could have been.
In the same living area, is what he's saying.
Yeah, your, your Ro, my Rolex watch could have been on the dresser, and I know, I know, but.
Just as a, as a legal matter, so people understand, um, the search and seizure law doesn't prohibit, uh, searches or inspections. What it does is it sets a balancing act, okay? And it says, what is the governmental interest versus the private right? And it takes a look, and the more invasive something is, the higher the level of the government interest must be. So, that's the balance that you look at, and so what a court would look at in, um, a landlord-tenant situation would be, um, how much of the landlord's privacy is being affected, and how important is that to protect the tenant, tenant's safety, children's safety, things like that? Um, and so they would look at things like, you know, was this a lead paint, uh, you know, are you looking for, you know, all those different things, ingress, egress, that type of thing, you know, fire safety, those types of things, smoke detectors, you know, that type of thing.
Right.
So, that's a, that's, that's a kind of a, the balancing that you can see, and so one of the things that you are doing here is trying to do that same thing, you're trying to balance and say, okay, well, when is it appropriate and fair, uh, when is it too invasive? That's the discussion you're having, and that's why I say, if you take a look and see how other municipalities have done that, then you don't have to reinvent the wheel, you might be able to say, oh, well, this one is more comfortable for me than the one that we started with, let's try that version instead. Exercising that balancing act, realizing you want your tenants to be safe, at the same time, you know, it would be unduly invasive to the, uh, to the owner of what would, of a, of a leased property.
But if there's resistance by the, by the property owners, is Judge Sweeney gonna issue a right administrative warrant to let somebody get in the house or not? She probably, she's probably not gonna do it, 'cause unless you have a real.
I've been on it, if it's, if we've got an ordinance, I think she's gonna support our ordinance like she has in the past. Well, I've been on it, if it's, if we've got an ordinance, I think she's gonna support our ordinance like she has in the past. That's her duty to.
Again, it would be a balancing, it would be a balancing situation, she would look at it, and, and balance it, that's, that's typically the analysis that a court does in a situation like that, so. Just based on my experience as a, as a solicitor, I mean, we do get, we do get civil search warrants to go in and inspect properties, and so forth, even over the objection of landlords. So, you know, I, I know that's happened, I, I can't tell you exactly what the circumstances were as I sit here, I just know that, that it's happened, and Judge Sweetie would then make that determination, I think.
I, I, I've heard everybody keeps talking about the, you know, the land, whether or not the landlord wants, and that's not even the way I was approaching it, what is the tenant want? I mean, it's their home, they have a home, they're making a home here, and you wanna come in and inspect it, that's why I started off asking everybody, do you want someone coming into your home, checking your smoke detectors? Because that's really what you're doing, you're going into somebody's home and checking to make sure, and you're not, they're not even necessarily gonna be home. You might just be there with, with the landlord, and what happens though if, if the people work? Are we gonna have inspectors that come out on Saturdays or Sundays, or when the people are available, because I wouldn't, I would never vote for something that didn't allow the tenant to be there, because it's a their home. They just can't afford a house.
There's nothing that, that says that they can't be there, am I correct?
I understand, yeah, but it's, but the ordinance always specifies that the owner must be there, doesn't say that the tenant has to be there.
I guarantee you, we have some places that if you went into them, you would be horrified. And, I'm not gonna mention any other towns, you know, but they've got a mess with their situation. And they're doing this for a reason, for the welfare and the safety of the tenants, and we owe that to those people, they're, you know, contributing to the, to the, our municipality, our businesses, and I just hate to see, I could, I could take you to three different places right now, that there's no way in, no way in the world that you would say, I would want my kids to live here, or my grandkids to live here.
Dave, you said about the, uh, the house with the roach problem, do you think that tenant would have said, yeah, come on in and inspect?
The tenant?
Yeah, the tenant, or the landlord, for that matter.
I thought the tenant was in here, weren't they?
No, not, no, not the tenant.
That was a neighbor.
That was somebody who owned one of the other properties, which we could not inspect, so I'm just telling you that that tenant wouldn't have come in and said, oh, yeah, come and inspect my place.
Well, but if we go in and there's roaches, children, and you told me that wasn't a healthy thing.
Right, yeah.
You're, you're right, you're right.
How are we further ahead?
Right.
Well, it couldn't, it could be something other than roaches, we are just using that because we've had that situation, you know, it could be snakes, spiders, I mean, it could be a little bit anything.
Can we give a, um?
But the borough's not gonna dead box.
Can we, do we give a copy of this to our solicitor, and then we talk about it next month?
Well, what I was think, thinking with, just to save you money, is, you, you could certainly give it to me, I'll think it to Dave and have him work it up, but I think that, you know, if you want Andrew to take a look at other, other ordinances, bring that, bring samples back, of, you know, these are how other ordinances handle the inspections, then you would know, and then you could say, okay, we would like Dave to work with these, come up with something.
So when we, when we do, when we make that what happens, that, and you bring more back, and we discuss it, and we see.
Are you allowed to forward that?
It's all, it's all mine, yeah.
Oh, it's all mine?
Yeah, it's all mine.
I, I'm just surprised that, with, with all the attention on this, there hasn't been a, a situation where somebody's refused, and then, and the situations come up, okay, and they say, maybe, okay, I'm not gonna let you in, so what?
They, they do, there's, but there's one right now in Glen Rock, and they, they're taking him to court. But they're pulling his permit.
Well, that'd help the tenant, to a certain extent, I mean, if they pull his permit, you know, and you.
I don't, I don't know what the ramifications are within their law of how many months, or, you know.
Mayor Butcher is saying that we're protecting the tenants, but I feel like we're doing them as second-class citizens, because they rent, they don't get the same options or liberties as those of us who own our homes. I think that's a terrible thing to say.
We have people that own their homes, when I was a funeral director, I had to dig through corded messes to get from room to room.
But you're not asking to go into homeowners, you're asking to go into renters.
This lady rented.
But I'm saying, I think that we're saying to them that they're second-class citizens to those of us.
I know, I think, I, I would hope that they would look at it as though we're trying to protect them.
I don't have a problem with.
Just like zoning, the zoning ordinances that we have are a pain in the butt, but they're there to protect us, to protect our neighbors, to make sure the electric is, is in right, that, that if you drill a hole in the wall, you know, in a stud, there's a metal, piece of metal there that you're not gonna drill through and burn the waste in your neighbors' down.
You said you had to go into homes and climb over stuff, that's the way the person that lived there wanted to live?
Well.
If that's the way they didn't wanna live, then they cleaned it up.
Really, didn't want to, they were both had dementia, but.
All right, I make a motion, we, we table this until next month.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Pose, my vote is aye. You'll give us something.
I'm not sure they wants to after that. Again, as I said, it was a draft, it, it was to start the, jumpstart the discussion, and it just died, so.
Yep.
Ended it.
Okay, Lions Club, agree with it. Sorry?
I, I, I don't know whether I have it out of order, or.
It's kind of, it's just.
It's got a little notation on the right side.
I'll pull it up on my.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the, at this agreement?
Whose writing is in black, whose writing is in red?
The, the black is, this agreement was received from the Lions Club, so the black is their writing, the red is things that were redlined to, um, to change the, the agreement.
I think.
Some of those are Solicitor Jones's recommendations, some are my recommendations and changes, and the comments noted, you can kinda see the initials there. If there's additional comments.
Why did we change it to Lions Club, Club?
Initials, or, or AS?
There, we go by the, by Lions Club, not the Lions Club.
Well, you're reading, yeah, there's just some, not at all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a little, when you're looking at a redlined version, it gets a little.
Very confusing.
Well, I didn't wonder.
Fundamentally, from what it was to after the changes, is it really that much different?
No.
Is it, it's just cleaning up some of the verbiage, like the, the Carnival grounds to March Goodfellas Park, things like that?
Right, a lot of it, a lot of it just is consistency throughout the document.
Yeah, right.
It's, uh, identifying the actual parcel, uh, naming that parcel, and adding some legal jargon, verbiage, uh, throughout the document, again, just to clean it up.
Is that legally called March Goodfellas Park? Did the previous councils try to change the name, or was that just an honor?
The D refers to it as New Freedom Playground, so that's why I need that comment.
Yeah, I can, I can understand.
Yeah.
When did this agreement originate, this is a brand-new document?
This is a brand-new document. I was received, um, after the last council meeting, I believe it's, it's been discussed in the past, and kind of noted in here as well, that sections or pages four and five were missing from that previous written agreement back from nineteen ninety-three.
So this whole agreement was written up by the Lions Club?
That's correct.
Did the Lions Club get the red lines?
Not yet, because I thought it would be beneficial for the borough to not provide a document that wasn't clear, that we could come to one agreement and send back as a cleaned-up redlined version for their review and input.
What did, what did they have that you changed, like, we've changed?
I guess anything that's redlined, right?
Well, we're got some words.
Appears that paragraph two is rewritten, appears to be.
Full edition, right?
And then paragraph three. So. And then I think paragraph ten or something like that. And I think there's a change to paragraph eight.
So we can't even get feedback from the Lions Club, because I don't even know.
Why did we change the verbiage of, you know, on June twenty-fourth ending July fourteenth, what if the carnival date changes?
Give, give one second there, um.
I'm sorry?
What? Can you explain?
Well, no, I mean, if they wrote this up, I mean, there's a lot of red on here, there's whole paragraphs that have been added, like, I'd like to know what the Lions think, because this is coming to an agreement between the Lions and the borough, being parts of the contract can't be found. So before I sit here and say I agree with these things here, I'd like to know what the Lions think.
Well, I think, what they're trying to do is get what you think. Agreements for the community center. And then, and then send it to the Lions for that very purpose. Okay, they were, they're agreed, and you're reviewing it now, what's the difference? I, I, I think the goal is before, uh, uh, I mean, before the, the borough would send something to, um, the, the Lions. I think the idea is to make sure that it's okay with the borough first, that, yeah, this is fine, we can send this to the Lions and get their comments, and make sure that they're okay with it, or if they have changes. Someone has to start that process, so, since the changes were made by people on behalf of the borough, it was appropriate for the council to see this first, to make sure that we're not sending something to the borough that you folks wouldn't agree with, if they agree with it, do you see what I'm saying? So let's assume that, just hypothetically, the, the changes to the first paragraph, um, their effective date or whatever, let's assume that, that you didn't like that language, okay, we should know that before we send that language to the Lions and ask them for their comment. We wouldn't wanna send something that you disagreed with to the Lions, and then say, yeah, we like that language, and then come back, and then you say, oh, well, we don't like the language. Lions would say, well, then why did you send it to us? So that's, that's why it starts again, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so, the Lion, where did the Lions get all of this, is this parts of the pages they could find?
Well, we have two of them here, so.
The committee that, the other only committee was me, our past president, our, our president now, people that have been Lion members for thirty, forty years, I don't know if they were part of that original contract, the pages were missing, so our solicitor from our district for the Lions, International, wrote that up, he just asked us for a starting point, a draft, so that we could have somewhere to begin and put ideas down, so that's why we wrote what we wrote, to bring to you, so you can make changes, so we can work together to come up with an agreement, because the other one for fifty years, he said, that's not gonna hold up. Who signs an agreement for fifty years? He said, so we should change that, we should change the other parts that we need, even some of the dates, I know, we only need the week before the carnival to set up, the week after to tear down. He put two weeks, you know, that's, you guys might have.
You've got a, you've got a trailer that you bring in, and you try to bring it in early.
Well, they need it for a week, not two weeks, so, but he stretched that a little, so there's play in all of that stuff, but we just wanted a starting point to rewrite that, since pages four and five were missing, every year I'd get it from, I'm like, there's two pages missing, we don't know what's in those two pages.
Why, why don't?
And we don't own.
And that was his other fifty-year agreement, correct?
Yes, and because we don't own the grounds, we don't own the buildings, we only own the equipment in the buildings, we don't own any, and we don't want rent from any of that stuff, I think that's the other agreement too.
To, just to, just to make life easy for everybody, why don't we just put together one clean document?
Right.
Without the red lines, and have that come back to council?
I think that's what you.
And I'd have to see what he changed.
That's what the red line is, what they've changed.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't think anything, anything, I mean, as you said, there was wiggle room, I mean, you don't really need two weeks before and two weeks after, you know, so that was one of the, that's probably one of the major things that were changed, and then, um.
But they do know one year, it was last year, not this one, but last year, they left their equipment for all those two weeks on the Carnival grounds, and they left it in the middle of the grounds, and they know the kids were using it for soccer or practice, at least this year, they moved them to the front, the stones, and they were gone. Barely in a few days, but yes, they were sawing that one time, now I haven't been here long enough to know, but, yeah.
Is that sound reasonable?
Isn't that what you're trying to get to, you're trying to get input now, and send it back to them, to clean up verbiage, what was saying.
Because our solicitors are to suggestions too, he said, when you get your input, they'll look at it again, they'll fix it here.
So it started with the Lions Club, then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so the, the black is the, is the original, and then the red's us, okay.
Changes.
Who will maintain the electrical system?
I think there was, isn't there some confusion there about the electrical system, I'm getting the impression that, there's two different electrical systems, each one of those buildings has its own breaker box. So everything can be turned off when you're not using it, but there's also another major breaker box over on the stage, correct, or two? So this, the way this is written now, it seems to me that you're saying they're responsible for all the electric in the park, where do you see it?
Well, they, the proposal, I believe.
Wasn't it?
Was that the Lions Club owned, in all three buildings, the Lions Club owns the electrical breakers.
Right.
No, I think, because we put in those, then we put in the new electrical breakers for the hot water heaters, they're the only ones, we put those in.
Okay. The way, yeah, the way they have it written, and I think that might have been some of the confusion is that in all three buildings, but I mean, either way, I think we can there's just a little bit of confusion. Work out some of those details, it's not a.
Yeah, because that's simple stuff, because the Lions look at it this way, we just did that stuff, we put in hot water heaters, because that's what we do, we give back, so we gave back, we did that stuff, so anybody using those cookshoves and stuff could have access to that stuff. So we don't, we put them in, but it's not like we owned them, we did it as a service, because we needed hot water heaters in there.
And I commend the Lions for doing that, that's important. Department of Health would come in, and we don't have hot water. See ya, close town for whatever you're doing.
Is the ambage good enough for the carnival that's there, now, was it changed?
It was upgraded, uh, about two years ago.
Yeah, I mean, they still blow some breakers in the fry shack in the end, that's because the Boy Scouts plug all the extension cords into that building, so we run down wherever we can to get power cords, so it can, and we have generators, so we're, yeah.
Or you could almost, this almost doesn't even have to be a lease agreement, it should just almost be a resolution of understanding, or, you know, I mean, it's not like.
Right.
This is kind of to protect you from future borough councils that might say, yeah, but we don't want the Lions Club here anyway, that's really what we're trying to get to, so, I think, I still go back to, I mean, just, I think we could all work this out, if we just put together one clean copy and just say, here it is.
If I can just, and basically, they just wanted to protect all their equipment in the buildings, because they.
Yeah, and to give you, if something happens.
That is basically it too, yes.
To give you, give you an opportunity to get it out, if something's going to happen.
So that is the major stuff, and this day would have a.
Do the Lions Club have insurance on their equipment that they have in the building, is that insured, do they have insurance for that something happening?
We have an insurance policy through the Lions Club and the Congress, plus we have our functions, Lions Club and International Club.
Yeah, but I'm saying, so suppose, you know, the borough owns a building, suppose somebody comes in and steals. somebody comes in and steals some stuff, who pays, who collects, or who's insured?
It's probably the title house, because it's our stuff. So I guess the title and our policies, so, but we don't let anybody use the stuff either. That's why we don't let anybody use that equipment in there, because we don't want to be liable for them being injured or anything, using their equipment. They can use the shacks, we don't use our equipment.
Do you, if, are you allowed through Lions, though, to give someone permission to use the equipment?
The only person-
Because I see him making, what, egg sandwiches and hamburgers?
Well, the only person we gave permission to was Dave Michaels, because he's a Lion, and he used it for the rec, for those.
For rec, okay, okay.
And then when they did smoke with the rail, we cooked, you know, the other ones cooked, but he didn't, he used Dave's permission.
So we, as Borough, need to know that if we're renting something down there, that-
We don't, yeah, if we're renting those buildings out, it's only the building, we don't, they would have to coordinate that with the Lions.
They could, yeah.
I think we're all in agreement, why don't we just put together a clean version? That way we could all look at it, understand it, and we could even have maybe a short meeting, you know, with a subset, and come up with, you know, make sure the words are all okay for you, and then bring it back to council and approve it, hopefully, or at least, you know.
Does anyone, is there any objection to us sharing what we have now with them, so that when we all come back together, they at least know where we're standing temporarily?
We can do that in a meeting when we meet, it's, you know, while I waste more time studying here, studying there, studying it back, I mean, you just fix it.
No, 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 so you're seeing what we're, what we're looking at-
Right.
Because right now, you don't have a copy of this.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think to Erica's point, I mean, I don't, it's hard to-
Right.
It's hard to follow and understand.
Clean it up and then have a meeting.
And then, and then you could, I, I have no objection to sending, cleaning it up, sending it to them, let them come back to next meeting, and then everybody's on the same page, we'll all have the same document, and then we'll finish it up.
What do you have on the motion?
Um, do we even need a motion? Do we need a motion?
It's just, it's just a work in progress document.
So, I, I think we're just saying, let's do that.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead, we'll put it all in the one document with no crossouts or anything, get you a copy before our next meeting, we'll get a copy before our next meeting, and then we could all read it, we'll read it, and you can give it to your solicitor to read it, and then we can all get back together and finish it up.
Good.
Fair enough?
Yep, thanks.
Thanks for your time.
Who's responsible for the renters making sure that after it's been rented, that it's cleaned, and that it's in orderly, ordered order, and nothing's damaged?
If we rent it out to somebody else?
Yeah, like if rec uses it.
It says, "The Borough shall require all renters to clean the personal property of the Lions Club when the rental is completed. Borough also agrees to promptly replace any lost or damaged items due to rentals to others." So what's gonna be in place to make sure that happens? Who's responsible?
Well, it really doesn't need to say that they're cleaning their property if they're not using it, only if they spill something. Yeah, I mean, but as far as any inspections after rental, outside of normal Borough or rec functions, it would be somebody from the Borough, make sure that those facilities were, maybe you can only really sweep them at that point, yeah.
But it says, "The personal property of the Lions Club, itemized in paragraph one above, may be utilized by other renters."
That needs to be approved, because as they said, that that's not-
It says, "Except the grills and fryers may not be used," but you didn't redline that out. But they-
The only other thing that sometimes they utilize would be the refrigerators.
There's refrigerators, yeah.
But the grills and fryers are-
They don't give us-
I don't know.
But that's the Lions' language, because it's a Black.
And some of that was just the first draft that our solicitor had written out, too.
Which means we'll have a duty to make sure it's cleaned, in a working order.
We have it, we have that same responsibility now.
Anytime the Borough office rents something out, the Borough office should go look at it and make sure it's done.
My mind's going. Yeah, that's, that's why I'm asking, it is, I know the trouble we have with the community center, so that's why I'm asking, is this gonna be another one? You know, how's it gonna be verified? It's important, it's important.
There was a question in the back.
Hey. Hey. Uh, you said about the agreement being like a, I don't know what word you used, but just an agreement between the two. Can you please make this a, like, legally binding thing? Because previous council members had also been Lions Club members, and ever since I started working here for the Borough, it has been a going back and forth, because they didn't want to do something, and then they sent it to the Lions Club and the Borough, and it's just been a pissing back and forth.
No, we're going through with it. We're gonna, we're gonna have something, a document, that everybody can point to and say, "This is, you know."
Yeah.
And they have a right to have the carnival for the next fifty years, and then everything will be, you know.
Just cover the bases for future arguments down the road, yeah?
I just want, you know, in thirty years, I won't be a-
Maybe.
Jake, wait. Okay, good enough? Consider approval of the resolution authorizing the submission of a local share grant.
Uh, so, local share grant is a grant which is administered by D C D. The funds for this grant come from gambling proceeds, and everyone has a copy of the facilities program and the breakdown of the guidelines. So this is a grant that does not require a match. The only output from the Borough is a hundred dollar application fee payable to D C D or Commonwealth Financing Authority, who handles grant administration. We have a generator that is used, as we've discussed before, used in emergencies to provide electricity to Rose Fire Company.
Is that something?
Sorry, I'm paying it. It's the mother of it. Yeah, we're gonna have a five-minute recess. We've got a bathroom, we're not gonna-
Of course, we're gonna-
Yeah, I figured it's gonna get to lunch times.
Mike, how do you find time to be down here when you've got all that driving to do?
I'm sorry?
How do you, how do you have time to come to the neighborhood, you have all that driving to do?
I'm running on quick days, I have to-
I've been working on it for a while, it's not on the chart, it's on the state.
Well, I have to ask you, I mean, what do you think about the rest of the rest of the rest of the rest of the year?
They have years, they have both options, yeah. Oh, yeah, all furniture, you know, can't be used that way.
We sit there every two hours, we're around one two.
We can't proceed without you.
Well, my daughter's in high school, she's in Pittsburgh right now, living on campus. Yep.
But they, they did, like, a new bus, no, go for it.
We wanted to buy one down from the beginning, but to make our rest of the rest of the year, we made our rest of the rest of the year.
Well, yeah, it's, it was, yeah.
Well, how much rent is it?
Nope.
Well, it's like a possible given, a lot.
Yeah. And, and I don't, I don't like doing it with friends, I mean-
No, it's a pleasure, it's a pleasure.
Something happened.
Right. You can enjoy it in a big, like, yard. But they can't afford to buy it, they can't afford it. Yeah, but- Because they don't want to pay.
Oh, yeah.
Sixteen hundred? Try about two grand. They can afford to have a lot of it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they planned it for the-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right.
All right, we'll go ahead and call back to order, please. Where was I?
So, I think what we were discussing was the generator at Rose Fire Company in New Freedom Community Center. As we mentioned before, that generator is split to provide service to, to both buildings. During the recent power outage, the generator did run for an extended period of time, and we did locate that the generator has a rear main leak in the seal, and it's gonna be about a little under twelve thousand dollars to have that replaced.
Oh, it wasn't just a hose?
That was another.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So the generator is on a, a periodic maintenance schedule. It previously served at the wastewater treatment plant, and when they had to upgrade the generator at the wastewater treatment plant, that generator was placed in service at Rose Fire Company and the community center. So it's obviously served its purpose. Under this grant opportunity, as I mentioned, it's a hundred percent funding. The hope would be that we could obtain the gen, obtain the grant and purchase the generator and have it installed, and the price is a little over fifty-four thousand dollars. So, again, no, no obligation other than a hundred dollar application fee to come up on financing.
So we don't have to act on it until we've been approved, or, once we've been approved, then we, we go at it again?
You would have to authorize the purchase of the generator, and you would have to authorize the purchase of the install.
Will we entertain a motion, then, to approve resolution number twenty-three dash to be determined?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. My vote is aye. Resolution authorizing the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for maintenance and repair of traffic control devices. This is kind of an interesting story.
Yeah, so you make me wonder why, when we don't have any traffic signals or anything in New Freedom Borough, we will, obviously, whenever the manufacturer gets to delivering the pedestrian signals for Main Street, as well as then Franklin Street as well. So, if, kind of follow this situation, I don't know if you've seen this in other municipalities represented, there is only a handful of companies that are able to perform in the area of traffic light and signal maintenance. One of those companies, the owner-operator recently passed away, and it's kind of leaving everybody in limbo of who to go to for these services. So York County Municipal Administrators Association came together as a group and came up with a cooperative, cooperative purchasing agreement, basically to assemble a list of those signals in the participating municipalities, provide that list to bidders, to submit bids on prices to do the work, should the need arise. So you're not locking into an absolute cost, you're locking into having the ability to, number one, call somebody, and number two, know what that cost is going to be.
You're joining a buying group.
Yeah. Obviously, these are brand-new pedestrian signals, we shouldn't have any issues outside of the norm, and for hopefully a few years during their warranty period. But if the situation comes up where we need to have somebody work on these, it would be nice to have, to know that someone's going to come out and make those repairs, and what price is going to be. So that's where this-
And it's no cost to us.
It's no cost to us.
But if you have an apparent motor, I mean, you could always hit one of them, too, I suppose.
Right.
You brought over the other stuff, Lisa pointed out, so.
Yeah.
Can't hit it if it's not there, yeah?
Yeah.
Is there, speaking of which, is there any update on this? Because this is supposed to be beginning of summer, correct?
Uh, well, actually, it was supposed to be December of last year.
Okay.
Yeah. They apparently now have the signals, and they're shooting for the eighteenth, which is next month. But that has changed multiple times before, so.
Oh, this is a PennDOT thing, right?
Uh, no, this is a, this is a supplier, supply chain issue.
And after that, we'll be able to maintain the rest of the walkway across the tracks, whether that be concrete or asphalt.
Once everything's in, we need to see how we need to address those areas as well, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I mean, they're definitely not walkways.
This is just for the-
Well, I'm kind of-
Yeah.
Asking if that's why we haven't done the rest of that.
Yeah, so Windsor Township, they are going to be the first, as it says, agency responsible to do the building, the bidding, and then it's going to rotate around to the other municipalities, basically to handle the bidding, based on the term of the bidding.
Just like basically sharing costs annually, or like rotating costs?
Yeah, there's really minimal cost, because you're not-
Just office work, basically, getting the bids, and-
Once, once you actually have all the people lined up, and just maintain it.
Right.
So we could add other municipalities to this?
That would be up to the municipalities to come in, but that would have to be during the rebidding, because-
They're changing cost structure.
Well, we go to, like, Shrewsbury, Noro, or Stewartstown?
Well, this has all been sent out to all municipalities.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it's just up to whoever they want to participate in.
Are we responsible for any repairs outside of the Freedom, for anybody?
On, on signals?
On anything, I mean, I'm trying to grasp the whole reason of this, is so we can secure working on these signals if they need to be, because there's limited companies that do it, is that right?
Correct.
But if there's ten municipalities that join this agreement, four of them need to be worked on, we don't absorb any of those costs for them to be worked on, right? That's what section four E numbers, is that right?
We only pay for the services that we acquire, at the time. We only pay for the services that we acquire at the time we require.
Service and parts, correct.
Oh, yeah.
But once a year, it will be our responsibility to whoever wants service that's in this agreement. We will have to facilitate the bidding for that stuff to happen? I'm talking about for a, like Windsor, it says Windsor's deciding to, to start this rotating basis?
Correct, based on the term of the agreement. So, every time that this.
What's rotating?
It's rotating among the member municipalities.
But what's rotating?
Yeah, what the responsibility to get the bid.
The administration of, of sending out requests.
That's rotating, so once a year, is it once a year, is it yearly, is it rotate yearly?
There's ten, ten municipalities, it would be once every ten years.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, is it rotated yearly?
Yes, yes.
Every year.
Cause Windsor's gonna have it for the first year. So, if we need work in the first year, Windsor would facilitate that bidding process?
Now, we would already have a list of bidders, right?
No, well, Windsor would facilitate getting the bids and, and reviewing them on behalf of all the other members. And then they would send it out and say, we've selected X, Y, Z company.
That's not on a per instance, that's just for that.
Every year you do that.
For that year, Windsor's gonna do it.
And then it's gonna go to Springins Berry and then it'll go to Spring Garden and then it'll go to, it, it, it's routine.
Right, so you find the lowest bidder and we use them for the year. And then next year, somebody else would find the lowest bidder and use them for the year.
And knowing the situation, there's probably only going to be one.
It's not a lot of work and it gives us a place to go to get the service work done.
And there's nobody that fits under coastores for any of these kinds of things.
It's a service. It's, yeah, not for, for purchase of the items possibly.
Okay, yeah, I got you, yeah, for service it would be different.
I'm overly approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second and for the discussion, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. By go decide. Professional services agreement with Arrow, this is only for one item?
It's for the well?
Well.
Well number one upgrades.
This is for upgrades to well number one. And you can kind of see the breakdown there of the process and what the different tasks entail. So, this proposal was provided out of a meeting that we held with Arrow regarding the need to make some changes at specifically well one among the other wells in the future. So, basically, page five of six breaks down all the tasks as far as cost-wise. Before that, each task is broken down into the different sections.
Back, back in September of twenty-two, Arrow had sent some information regarding, you know, each of the wells. And one of the things they had for one was pilot test for adding a sequestering agent. And I don't know if that was done under one. And two, when I looked at the information that was in here, it would have been nice to see alkalinity, dissolved CO2 and whether these deposits are actually calcium carbonate or it's actually just from other places where they had liquid caustic. It ended up by being the caustic, it was deposited inside the pipe. And so, I'm curious as to, did they look and see, tip some of this material off and see is the calcium carbonate that's actually in the water? And it was a, it's a reaction with pH or because of the pH or is it the caustic itself? And also, what's the, what's the alkalinity and the dissolved CO2 in, in the raw water to start with? Because that does have a very long term. It, it, it's, is sequestering a real option or not?
I mean, retry other chemicals and stuff, but I mean, you're gonna spend more money on other chemicals. If it doesn't work, you're gonna be back and doing the ion exchange anyways, you know what I mean? I.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, one of the options.
PennDOT's the one that, or not PennDOT, but he, he's the one that told us that they, you know, caustic should take care of the problem.
Yeah, well, let's see what they do.
Caustic's not taking care of the problem, it's causing the problem.
We gave them, we gave them the alkalinity and the hardness, I think, of the, of the raw water and the finished water.
Yeah.
I gave them the spreadsheet of all that to Arrow when we met with them originally for them to go back and look at these options. And when we sat down and talked with them, we were figuring on, you know, like Donnie said, we should go with a pilot test on a, another chemical. And we're talking with the, with the chemist and the engineer that was there, they decide, they thought it was in the best interest to go with the softeners due to the fact that you could put all the time and money into a problem and create a worse problem with trying a pilot, pilot chemical.
But nobody, nobody has an idea what the, what the quote-unquote softener's gonna cost, even if they reduce the size. Like they're talking about three and a half foot diameter softener. And so, I mean, it's a pressure vessel, so they're not inexpensive. Plus, their, their cost for this was two hundred thousand plus, right? Now you've got the equipment. So, I'm just looking, is there, is there another way to do it that's gonna be a little less expensive and provide, come up with the same thing? Do the same thing? And they're saying you can't do it without a pilot test, sorry, so you do a pilot test and find out, yeah, it works. Or, you know what, there's still problems when you do a pilot test and you're adding a sequestering agent. Maybe it's the homeowner's hot water heater that's gonna cause a problem, you know, or something. Or they'll have a problem with because the sequestering agent breaks down or something. But I don't know, it just seemed like it would be nice to know, number two, what, what's the question was gonna, what's it gonna cost just for a pilot test to find out? Cause the equipment's not too much, you're feeding another chemical. That's my two cents.
Wouldn't that be part of the whole design?
Wouldn't you go through that step?
No, they're, they're gonna go right to the equipment.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's, the reason we went back to, we went back to Arrow, they have their, they have a chemical engineer that was able to tell us what to do. We're not chemists, so we can't, we can't, we don't know what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, I'm not a chemist either, but.
But we're trying to go by their recommendations. Now, I guess we can build another engineering firm, we can build another chemist and find out what he says?
No, I mean.
Well, you're saying, would you try the, what, sequestering agent?
Yeah, I'd say just do a pilot test.
And see if it works.
Find out what the sequestering agent's gonna, gonna work or not.
If it works, how much money is it gonna save us for now?
What, I, I mean, if you're talking about feeding a chemical, chemical feed and, and it's gonna be a fraction of what they're talking about just to do the.
We don't have any idea what the cost of all this stuff is.
We just got ourselves down to where our, our pH level, we're, we're good, we got our lead copper levels good now. And we kinda hate to want to be fooling around with other chemicals and mess that up. And then we get to bottom of DDP and get back to evaluation again.
It is, that is a double-edged sword when you start.
Well, and also with dealing with Arrow, with Jimmy Dennis, he's a, I, I guess he's a retired water certified water operator. He's dealt with the same thing that we're dealing with now in the wells. When we showed him what we're dealing with, he's like, I've seen it before. Their guy, their chemist that came down, he's dealt with this before. They know that the water softeners will do the job. And that was another reason why they said that they would recommend going with the water softeners in comparison to try and, wanna win another chemical that we would have to buy other pumps for, which, dealing with new carton and the other people that we dealt with that pretty much threw money down the drain. I still have those chemical pumps on a, on a shelf over there that are no good for anybody, they don't work. So, we didn't wanna be back in that group again and waste more time. And like Donnie said, possibly put ourselves back in another deal with DEP where we got more headaches and stuff like that. So, we were just going by their recommendations with the experience that they have of knowing that in other instances, this is work.
Yeah, I know the numbers look scary, but I really think this is the only way to solve the problem here if we're gonna be using this well. Which, it's a good well, it's just that we have to treat it, do the treatment, that's all.
Well, one's the only one that you get the erratic.
No, we have it at well four also. But let's see what, we get, we get well one straight now, well one's a little worse than four is, but let's see if it works. I mean, it's gonna cost a little money, but in the long run, I think it'll be worth it.
So, this would be for one well, there's a problem with another well that we would have to possibly do exactly the same thing down the road?
Possibly, or if we see what happens with this here, maybe something is done different with the other one, might not be as expensive, I don't know.
Was well one not pumped this month?
We didn't, we had some issues over there with it with cleaning, trying to get the buildup done over there. So, we were working on careful plating part and something on the well. Now, we've had it nine more again, it's running now, it's been running since, what, first of the month, then close to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we said run it through the month last month at all.
Do we have to get extra water from York Water to do that?
No, uh-uh, no. We're running well four and running well eight and using well three, we're, we're good, we're, we're doing okay.
Run into any problems at all when we get into drought situations?
As of right now, we're holding our own and we're okay. Yeah, and people would actually, we actually, they used my sport, it's more businesslike. Which is kinda odd because August was sort of a hot month, so it made people just hearing different situations with the heat and work on their wells, maybe people started conserving.
The two hundred and eleven thousand, does that cover everything?
That's, that's start to finish, yeah. I mean, that does not have to be authorized in its entirety at this time.
And Andy, just correcting, correcting my wrong, but this includes a generator as well?
Yeah.
As well, so we're looking at, instead of having to pull a portable generator, DEP wants us to have, it's a DEP requirement pretty much to have a backup power unit, just like all your pump stations for the syrup plants have generators at them. They want us to have them there as well in an emergency situation like where we lost power for a week. You know, we can, instead of just having one well running on a portable generator, we can have multiple wells running if we need to.
Is this money allocated or something or is this hanging out wanting to be used somewhere?
This money is, the money that would be used to pay for this is not allocated.
Where's it coming from?
It's part of the, the fund balance.
To, to draw down fund?
It's for. Yeah. Part of, part of fund balance.
Meaning from those notes?
It would be, yes, yeah.
But the two hundred and eleven thousand is the cost of getting it permitted in inspection, etc. Doesn't include equipment, right?
Oh, right, what you're looking at right now is just engineering, yeah, yeah, engineering.
Did I ask if that was separate from? Is that, is that two, two hundred and eleven thousand?
For the, for the services, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand the question.
So, that doesn't even buy the equipment?
No.
And the installation?
No, this is, these are just design and engineering deals.
It's on, it's on the list of what they're doing.
Well, it says construction.
Just construction.
Services, construction management, so, you know, the, so what's, what's the?
The services they're providing.
Is there an estimated cost beyond that of what the total, everything is?
They, during the task number two, they will develop opinion of probable cost at sixty percent complete and then revise that at ninety percent complete.
We have no idea what that would be.
At this time, based on those additions, there's no opinion of probable.
We could be into over half a million dollars, basically is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, again, and it depends on what's found during those design services.
How, how long has this issue been going on?
Years.
Yeah.
Years, decades.
Decades?
Yes.
So, why'd you stick us with it?
Did you ask to get elected back then?
Cause you're.
I will, so, I would suggest that council look at authorizing not all task one through four as indicated on page six, but rather look at task possibly one and two to get to a point where you have an opinion of probable cost and can determine the need to move service to move forward. I realize that comes with a cost, but if there are concerns after that point, you could, you could determine.
Is there an easy way to explain, so we've sent them samples, they, they know what the water looks like, you said before and after what we're doing now. Is there an easy way to explain why they can't give like an idea of like, it's gonna require this system, is this pumping these chemicals? And maybe it's gonna be, so you need a, a different building?
We didn't really discuss that during the kickoff meeting. I think it would be a very difficult to come up with and, you know, even a rough estimate without throwing probably a twenty-five to thirty percent contingency on that. But I believe that's something that could be developed if council would like to see that in order to move forward with their services.
Let me, let me ask you this, I, I mean, this has to be done if we wanna keep well one, right? I mean, it's not, it's not an option to do something else.
It's pretty much, it has to be done if you wanna keep in the water business.
So, and well one, that's what, that was my next question. Well, one is crucial to the health and well-being of our water system.
Well, it works a really good well too, it's just the waters are a little curdled, so we just need to treat it.
Yeah, I certainly don't wanna run afoul, but I just, I wish we had a better idea, I don't.
And you're asking more about like bench testing, is that what you're looking at?
He's looking at just, okay, if we wanna put these improvements in, what's gonna be the construction and equipment purchase dollar thing? And I think, again, with probably a twenty-five to thirty percent contingency, they can develop.
Yeah.
A rough estimate.
Can we ask the new clue or make a chance ahead of time if we're gonna have to do this? What's, what's it gonna cost to do a pilot test? I mean, if there's time involved with that, you're gonna have to actually use the water. They can't, I don't believe, they can't just take a sample and add something to it and find out if it's gonna do it. They're actually, they have to sort of simulate what the conditions are there, but I still think it's worth taking a look at. Sequestering, other places are used that it doesn't work in the right conditions, in the right circumstances. Whether it work here or not, I don't know, you don't know until, like you said, they have to do a pilot test.
And then if you do start to change chemicals, you still have to go through DEP to get it, get it approved?
Well, yeah, no matter what you do, you're gonna have to get a permit.
Yeah, cause we can do anything warm, but it has to go through DEP to get approved.
Is there a reason they might not approve it?
I don't know. I don't know, I mean. They, they kinda think they know what they wanna do.
The softening treatment is required because what is wrong?
Oh, the water's, it's hard.
You get dissolved calcium.
The water is hard?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it does, the softeners are gonna take out the calcium, substitute sodium ions in the salt that you're gonna regenerate that with. And, and the ion exchange takes the, the calcium ions out as a plus-plus and it's gonna substitute sodium ions for that. And when you regenerate it, you wash the, wash the calcium ions out and you regenerate it with salt. It gets regenerated with salt water, that's where the sodiums come from.
Yeah, what he said.
So, that's how you do it.
Yeah, well.
Well, it's really like your, your water softener on your house, it's just a larger system, right?
Rather than, if you use a lot of this, I've, for myself, lived here a long time, I mean, a lot of times you took notice in your sinks and tubs, you had like a little bit of a cream ring. Well, we don't have that anymore because we finally got the pH where it needs to be and we don't see that cream ring anymore. More of it, you know, from the water.
Oh, you come to my house. Oh, you come to my house.
Yeah, so it's, it's helping with that, too, you know, so that means, and that's a good thing.
I'd like to make a motion that we, go ahead, would we authorize task one and task two of the environmental services later?
I have a motion that we exercise task one and two on page five of six. Total cost is eighty-eight, eighty-eight-one and change.
He said that'll give us, basically getting through step one, or task one and task two would get a ballpark.
It, it should get us a closer firm cost, I mean, it should, it won't be just a ballpark, they should be able to identify equipment, right?
Yeah, because you're getting an opinion of probable cost at sixty percent, which probably will have a twenty to twenty-five percent contingency and then ninety percent, which will probably have a five to ten percent contingency.
At least they'll give you an idea.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, something has to be done, but that's a lot of large numbers.
Yeah.
Or, you know, basically, I mean, what if, honestly, like, what if the water changed? You said over the years, it's, it's changed, it's been more problematic at times.
Not like this, when the water's hard like that, that's, that's basically the way it is, it's the way your stone is in the ground, where it's coming from.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
And this, you're saying, would probably have to be done at two wells?
It's, yes.
Why not all of them?
Well, we don't have the problem with the well three, because that pumps a little bit more fast, I mean, two hundred gallons a minute. I don't think it's, the problem is, it's not happening at the well.
Okay.
The only thing that scares me is, we haven't seen anything yet, what's it gonna be like in ten years, 'cause now it's pumping somewhere else in the system. We don't know that yet, you know what I mean? Is it, or isn't it? I don't know, you know what I mean? And so, but these wells here are pumping, uh, you know, between seventy and ninety gallons a minute, and we're having problems at those wells, but not the one that's pumping two hundred gallons a minute, because it's pushing, I can't go out in the system further, but that's, because that's a bigger pumping at well. We don't need to have as big a pumps as the other ones, that's my problem with that.
Can I, let, let me put this a little bit in perspective. The fact that New Free and Borough has their own water system saves the citizens three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year over York Water Company. So, we're talking about spending eighty-eight thousand dollars to find out if we can make well one better again. But if we go with York Water, we're gonna be spending three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, did I do that right? It's a hundred and ninety-three times two thousand houses. Three hundred and eighty-six thousand. The hundred and ninety-three dollars per household, so I, I mean, I. Where's this gonna put us with the budget? I mean, are we better off to hold off a year and use more from York Water and then?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I don't think we are with budgets since we're.
Especially, especially the motion right now is to approve task one and two, we're gonna revisit this and make sure we know, we know at least. And this probably will be a little bit better than your five hundred thousand dollar estimate, but I'm, I would almost be willing to bet, did your five hundred thousand dollar estimate just probably close?
Is there a second?
There, I haven't heard that yet.
Second.
First and a second, to do the task one and two, to determine the probable cost of the upgrade. Any further discussion?
This, I see over here anticipated construction start date of twenty-four and bidding twenty-four, so is this gonna be like almost another year where we get past task one and two?
Most of that's because of you, because you have to send everything into DEP and have them approve, the test takes so long.
So what are you doing with well one for the next year?
We have to keep tearing it down and shutting it off and clean it and.
Nursing it.
Nursing it, basically.
How, how many, approximately how many hours every time you tear it down and clean it?
It takes a couple days, really, the stuff to clean out, the pipes.
And what, two of you?
It takes, it takes two guys to tear, one to two guys to tear apart the piping, and then a couple days for it to clean out. But, but the problem is, what are we doing to the system?
Further down.
That's why we don't, that's why we're not trying to run it as, as much as the other wells.
You're afraid we're gumming up water lines somewhere else down, down, down the system? I got you.
How many times in the past month did you take it apart?
Well, we haven't had it run very much in the past month because of this.
I guess it was off, but in a regular month, if you kept it running, how many times would you take it down?
Try to, I've been trying to run the stuff like two weeks, let it go for two weeks, and then try to run it another two weeks, see where it's at, but. Soon as we start seeing the pressures going up inside the well, then you know that we got problems.
It's gummed up, you get the back pressure?
Yeah, we just don't want it to, we don't want it in the middle of the night to go completely shut and explode, and when we got bigger problems, you know. So we try to keep air, we try to keep it clean.
I think that, that adds a little bit more clarity and context to it.
It, it looks like according to their schedule, design can complete by March of, of next year.
So that would come out of next year's budget? You have to put that into, into the budget this year? That's design permitting complete.
Right, which is the first two tasks.
Then you go into the bid phase and then you, start date of August of twenty-four. That answers my question, it would be coming out of twenty-four's budget?
A chunk of it will.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
But again, keep in mind, that's why we got the drawdown, that's what impact the budget as much, so. Any other questions? All in favor of approving task one and two at eighty-eight and change, whatever, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no?
No.
My vote is aye. Solicitors report.
Nothing to report.
Managers report. Everybody has a copy of the August twenty-three managers' report in their packet, anybody have any questions on anything in that report?
What happens with people that can't get on the internet to schedule a live tour?
Oh, they would just come into the office and we would process that for them on the management side of the software. Where they call in and we can do it that way.
And feasibility study for Marjorie Goodfill, those minutes, those minutes will be posted?
They have, the first two meetings were posted, the third, um.
Where at?
On the minute page on the website.
Under rec, or issue?
No, under, for council, 'cause the determination was that it was a committee of council.
Oh, okay.
It's under.
And any, any committee of council is open to rest of the.
The council, yeah, our third meeting was just last week and those minutes were sent out today for the group to review it.
Okay.
So it'll be posted as soon as the group agrees with the way they are.
Uh, question about my rec, um, at the last rec meeting, you mentioned that, um, for pickleball, which is more of like a drop-in rather than a sign-up program, it might have been, I don't remember what he exactly said, a little problematic or maybe not a great fit for, for pickleball or that style program.
Yeah, well, I did have that discussion with Rich and we're going to work through those things, but basically, the individuals can select the dates. So they don't have to select a week, they don't have to select a month, they can select dates, and we can put in the payment schedule that Rich has kind of moved forward with, so. It's, uh.
Okay.
We can put all those variables in.
And you'd also mentioned before the, um, things like community center rentals would be available online?
Yep, we actually took, took the first one last week, so. Somebody rented up the facility, went a couple ways through the process, and we went through the whole way on the backend and it worked, so.
Excellent.
Yep, so that's that forward facing calendar, public facing calendar, again, that everyone will be able to see if you wanna rent the building. Um, and it's everything from your information in there, contact information, the agreement, the disclaimer to the payment, to the return of the deposit.
That's all on the website?
Yep.
What about, so if I rented it, would my event show?
No, it would, it would just show, say you, you titled your event birthday party, that's all that would show, it wouldn't show any of your information.
Okay.
It'd even just say privately that?
It could say privately that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some people might, you know, for whatever reason, just want some level of anonymity.
Yeah, no one could be able to click and see all your information, what you're doing, that, that would not show.
Is it clear that if they put this description in, that's what will show on the website?
Yes, it clearly says on that subtitle heading that this will show on the public side.
But everything will show on the, on the calendar side?
Yes.
It's out the waiting, correct? I like the fact that I can see what's going on, what kind of parties going on on Sunday. So I can go up Monday morning and check it out, or make sure the doors are locked, since I don't go into a call anywhere.
Budget snapshot? Yeah, so, as we work through, obviously, we just finished up August thirty-first, um, so. Tara and I have been working to get the information into all of our different spreadsheets that we utilize for budget prep. So I just wanted to provide a couple notes on what we're looking at as we work through the draft twenty-four budget. So, we're, as we put in previous years, we're gonna continue to update and transition all of our accounts to make sure that they're compliant with the DCED chart of accounts. We will utilize those August thirty-first numbers to show actual through the year, then we'll project September first through December thirty-first and utilizing that total, come up with a projected twenty-two, twenty-four balance, noting any changes or additions that we wanted to see. I will note that the current tax rate, the current real estate tax mileage will have to be evaluated as we look at additional emergency services, so as it relates to police, fire, and EMS, if you're going to increase those, there will need to most likely be an increase in mileage. Just keep in mind that the current rate for your general is two mils. That generates enough revenue to pay for police services, that's it. So the borough operates only on earned income and any other fees and leases and rents.
Well, and the fire tax is separate.
The fire, the fire tax is separate, but just again, keep in mind, that two mils it's generated is enough to pay for police services, and that's it.
Okay, so.
Keep in mind that fire.
Well, right now, we, we, if you look at it, it's one point eight five, but it really isn't, because you have to add the fire tax in.
It's two plus two point, plus point two eight.
Plus point two eight, so if we would go with something with an EMS tax, that would take it up even further, but we would be assured that they would be getting some money.
Correct.
Rather than nothing.
So, and that's kind of, again, looking at preliminary numbers for twenty-four. The next sheet is just a quick pie chart showing the breakdown of municipal tax dollars. So for every dollar that comes into the office, you can see the breakdown there of what portion of that dollar goes to their services.
This represents twenty-three.
This represents twenty-four, there were only small changes, uh, basically, most of them are the same, there were some increases in public safety, some decreases, and some other ones have made up the difference, but they stayed very close to the same amounts.
That'd be something good for news line.
Yeah, it went out in January, similar.
Yeah.
Does that take into consideration what we anticipate police service to change, or no?
Yeah, I mean, I, when I looked at the figure, I added ten percent, 'cause I don't know what, we obviously know there's gonna be the increase in the, um.
From the, yeah.
Sixty thousand difference, plus whatever the CBA comes back with, and then normal increases.
Ten percent is probably close.
I figured, say, seventy thousand. I don't know. Again, we'll go through all that in October. Refuse fund, we're just gonna continue to upgrade those, um, those numbers. We'll have to reflect the twenty-twenty-four price from Penn Waste. The stormwater fund, that's the newly created fund following the last stormwater revision, ordinance revision, so any fees that are paid for stormwater permits and the exemption figures into that fund, and then that'll be utilized for improvements to the stormwater conveying system. Same thing with the water fund, we'll continue to use, use the figures as of August thirty-first. We discussed tonight the necessary improvements for well one and budget impact there. Sewer fund, we'll continue with implementation of base one improvements at the plant. Right now, as, as noted, we're getting ready for submission to DEP for their review. We are still awaiting word from Commonwealth Financing Authority on the one and a half million dollar grant that was applied for that. Obviously, that would be a cost reduction, and then the balance would be split between New Free and Borough, New Free and Borough Authority, and Railroad Borough, so obviously, the hope is that, that at least some, something of the one and a half million dollar grant that was submitted comes through.
What was the cost for phase one improvements?
Uh, it was, um, almost three million dollars.
Turned out to be two point five, did it?
Yes. That includes any of the increases as well, 'cause we can, I believe the grant allows fifteen percent. The eligible cost to go towards engineering fees.
And you're hoping for a one point five million grant?
Yes. Be fifty percent. And that is the, Commonwealth Financing Authority has a very interesting schedule as far as when they review applications. The next round is to be reviewed later this month, but they have a history of delaying those meetings and moving on to another month, so.
Are they related to DCED?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah.
Okay, that answers that.
Uh, one of the other items in the sewer fund is to complete some SCADA system enhancements at the Quail Ridge pump station to be able to get that information back to the plant as far as flow rate and pump run times. Capital reserve fund, we'll continue to finance that based on allocations from general water and sewer funds, and based on the schedule, we'll be looking at replacing the two thousand and six F three fifty tool body truck in twenty-four from the capital reserve fund.
Is that the way true?
Yeah, that's, uh, that'd be for, uh, help it works in water.
That's our, or, our, or?
Yellow?
Two yellow trucks, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, as far as recreation and community center funds, we'll continue to upgrade those funds based on actuals. Obviously, the recreation fund depends on the implementation of, and hopefully hearing back from DCNR about the Circuit Rider grant, uh, and then starting up a Southern Merk County Regional Recreation Commission.
Where do you think we are with HVAC up there? Are we gonna take that into consideration? Is that a replacement? Ju- just like the generator, are we getting to that point?
We're getting very close, you know, at some point, but should we, should we add these? I think that would have to be a conversation with, um, someone to look at that system and design something different.
'Cause right now, you've only got one company that can work on it.
That's correct. Yeah, very specific.
To replace that, would that? To replace that, would that include more than, you probably would have to replace ductwork, right?
That abomination overhead, the tops are done.
Well, that's new, that's, that's a new part of the building, the volume thing.
Dennis, what was the reasoning for such a specific system at the community center? Yeah, how long you been here?
Can't recall, Erica. I assume that that was...
Were you here then?
Yeah.
I assumed that that was part of the design and located, I...
Yeah, I mean, there was always an issue with the air conditioning at the community center.
Yeah.
So they had, um, consult, come up with a design, contractor put it in. And, uh, as far as I don't have been problems with it ever since.
There's a lot of different areas in that, it's not just like you have a blower in one part of the building. You've got blowers all over the place in that building, am I right?
Air handlers?
Air handlers, okay. Yeah, there's, and there's a separate one in, um, GM.
You have separate offices in some areas.
Well, that's what I was thinking, so.
It's really, it's hard to retrofit an old building. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's, because you don't have ductwork going to some areas and you don't, you know, it's just hard to...
I mean, we spent a lot of money in trying to keep that going, are we to the point, just like what these guys are saying, that we need to take a look at that? Or do you think we could hold off for a little bit longer?
I honestly, I don't have the answer to that. You would have to get somebody that's just a HBC specialist to kind of look at the system and determine, uh, do we keep fixing it as things break?
The guys that come in and work on it and try to nurse it along, don't say anything about, you know, look, we guys have got two years on this, okay?
They've never said anything to me, it's always just been, this is what needs to be replaced because X, this isn't working.
We've asked for, we've asked for a service contract over the years with prior management and we were always told no, and...
We have one now though, right? I thought we had service contracts on everything.
Well, as far as what's getting, not that, there's no...
It's not, it's out of that, uh...
Because the current warrant is...
They always say the extension.
To answer your question, I, in order, you would have to get someone that would specialize in that to come in and say, you have five years left on this, you need to start looking at a complete replacement. We recommend that you get rid of this entire system.
Should we do that, so there's no surprises when it just kind of boom goes out one day?
That's something to make in research and figure out.
Four warrants, four...
Yeah, because every time that one of their specialists comes down, it's a different one. I don't think we've had the same guy twice and they've always said, man, this system, they won't pull their hair out, they don't even know it.
But did they sell now, you know?
I, I have no clue what pulled them, so.
And we wouldn't have to stay with that company, correct?
I just wondered what they replaced it with.
The only person that's normal is the program, because he does, he does the program.
I think when they did that project, it never did anything to work out before, so it kind of was weird.
I mean, it's working good now, I know everybody from pickleball's complaining, it's all...
We have an issue with senior center, but that's, we're waiting for, we're waiting for...
The units that are there at the auditorium are a lot different than what the other system is it runs in the old part of the building.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's a big thing right there, that's more modern.
Yeah, that's completely different.
Not, not modern, but...
You got, like, the baffles that...
Yeah, they had the, kind of had the great things in the other part of the old building, because it being so old, it didn't, they had to work with it, I guess. So that's, that's part of, that's why I got a guy that felt like, kind of better working on it, because it's really kind of a little confusing how it works. I mean, when it works, it works fine.
So the question really is, getting back to this, how old is that system?
Yeah, two thousand and ten.
Twenty-eight, ten, is that?
What, this normal system runs for what, fifteen years?
Yeah, you're coming up close to that now.
Think about it. I'll do one better, you might want to think about, you know, what the cost is of that, the cost of other upgrades, a plan for the future. See what grants are available to replace it.
Hundred percent agree.
What'd you say?
I one hundred percent, I one hundred percent agree.
Other than that, really, are there that many problems with that building?
Oh, yeah, it's, 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 it's a lot of...
I mean, it is a hundred years old, right?
Drop over a million dollars into that building?
Still have to do an evaluation, that's some cost and then you have to figure out what, what you can get and what you can, what you can put up and...
Well, we've got a good bit of property up there, right? We've got that whole gravel area, but if we had to tear it down, expand.
I'm just saying, it should be, I'm not saying that's what we should do, I'm just saying it should be, it should be considered, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna start spending in the range of a hundred thousand dollars. You might want to just look and see, well, what else is gonna, you know, you can do an end-of-life study on a building and say, these are the things that need replaced. And if it's going to end up costing you half a million dollars in the next eight years, it's just something to look at.
I think so. That's on its third life. My, my parents both went to school there, I went to elementary school there.
Donny went to school there.
Yeah.
But you were putting that in the budget, is it a hundred?
Do you Andy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know what we probably, when we're talking about those controls and that, you know, maybe we should have somebody talk to Alan Bradley. Because they make pretty good controls, I don't know what cost would be.
What about Johnson Controls, do they do, they do, must do custom controls too?
Uh, maybe, I, I think they do, because we used to buy a lot of things on our work gift from, from Johnson.
Yeah, there's a lot of things to consider, but yeah. Okay, did you, and you have one more?
Uh, ju- just Highway eight, um, obviously we'll utilize liquid fuels fund to complete some street improvement project, projects. And we just received notification of estimated payment for liquid fuels for twenty twenty-four, it was a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for next year.
What was it this year?
Just slightly under that.
Really?
It runs about the same.
Well, I thought with the EV, you know, everybody's saying with the EVs, we're not going to get...
It will in fact, liquid fuels, yeah.
Highway eight, yeah, liquid fuels.
Again, just a quick noting that we had a lot of other things on the agenda tonight and we just kind of finished up the end of August. Just wanted to put together a couple of things, what we're looking at for next year, if there's anything that anybody has that you'd like to see or projects you'd like to consider, let me know and we'll work on trying to get that factored into the twenty-four budget.
Repairing the municipal parking lot.
Here, for community center or...
No, no, well, the community center, all that needs to be done is we need new lines painted at the community center. But I think, we're still working on, what do you call that, chit, tar and chip down at the municipal parking lot? That's, that's never really been...
Yeah, that's, uh, that's Millings.
Millings, they took Millings and just...
We, we already have proposals for, for estimates for those three lots that we looked at in the past, so.
Can we consider while we're doing that, additional lighting? For the switching over to LED?
For the community center?
No, 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 for the, for, for the municipal parking lot.
Well, it could be, I mean, you could add that in.
Instead, I think we've got two down there now, it'd be nice if we had one at the end, one in the middle and one at the other end. Because there's a lot that goes on down there, down there, down that line.
I have nothing. Erica, can you do the S R P A report, please?
I have the paper there, the calls were a bit high due to the storm on August seventh. There were a lot of trees down, of course, power out, lines down, a lot of mutual aid between departments. We assisted, they assisted, um, it was, uh, good working together. Officer Dylan Wall, he is on his own now, he's doing very well, he's a new officer. The old car, number seven oh three, was sold to somebody in New Jersey, they're trying to coordinate with him to come pick that up, it was sold for four thousand four hundred. They did have a new car, replace that one, that car is on the road, there's one other vehicle getting some outfitting. Sergeant T was in the hospital, he was having kidney issues, so keep him in your prayers and...
He's out of his home, he's on dialysis.
We had the Glenrock contract, it was voted on by the police commission, sent to the municipalities and, uh, that is it.
Questions? You kind of covered taxes and everything, do you have anything to add, Kim, or do you... I'm sorry, I was just looking at the call. Do you have anything you wanted to add for safety or you covered some of the stuff earlier? Wait till we get through the...
No, I have something when we do the, um, your report for compliance.
Engineering report?
Reviewed notices for P A D E P and provided clarification. Was there something, was there notices for, what were the notices for? Something happen or did... Jimmy Dennis met with staff to discuss an proposal for upgrades to well number one, including softening treatment and addition of a backup power supply generator. Arrow staff also reviewed notices for P A department or D E P and provided clarification. For what?
I'm sorry, I got caught off guard. We did, we did meet with Jimmy, are we able to roll in the Arrow's report?
Yeah, that, that first bullet point, the last sentence, I guess.
Oh, that was on the water allocation report, our permit, our permit expired. And I had never done that before, had to question them, the process, couldn't even find our permit of the act, had no idea where it was at. It wasn't anywhere in the file that I was given, so...
What's the permit for?
Uh, water allocation permit.
Water allocation.
For having the York order, taking the York order, we have to have a permit for that and, uh, that's what he... Uh, no, we didn't, we had to reapply for it.
Reapply?
Yeah, so it's a seven-year permit, so, I mean, we have it now, we have the permit, we got it, D P approved everything and we did all the paperwork for it, so... Yeah, the, actually, D P had called and said that the permit has broken.